I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And this is a meeting of the Amherst School Committee, and the meeting is being recorded in live broadcast by Amherst Media. So for those of you who are watching, it's a little unusual for me to have the chairperson moniker, and it's a very temporary moniker, but we had a recent election in the town of Amherst, and the previous chair of the Amherst School Committee is no longer a school committee member. So what happens when there's a reorganization is that the superintendent just runs the first part of the meeting by which nominations are made, and there's a vote for who will be the new chair, and then gladly hand the gavel and chairperson moniker over to whoever that person is, and that person can then run the rest of the process to identify the other officers in the Amherst School Committee. Any questions before we start that nomination process? So just to flesh it out in a little more detail, I'll run the nomination process for chair. The chair will then run it for vice chair and for secretary, which matters in terms of the Union 26 components, but I'll leave that to the chair to describe. So are there any nominations for chair of the Amherst School Committee?
I'd like to nominate Anastasia Donas to be chair.
Second? I was looking for a second. Would you be amenable to that nomination?
If it's the will of the committee.
So I just want to open it up for if there are any other... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Demling.
Yeah, just to comment, so I would be thrilled with you as our chair. I want to make sure that you don't feel forced into it, like, just because you are, you know, the most senior member, you know? It's a big time commitment, and the way I feel about it is whoever's chair, the rest of us ought to support the chair, not just in terms of what you're saying and all that, but in terms of trying to equally distribute the rest of the load as much as possible. I think sometimes our chairs, including our regional chair, you know, take on so much, you know, and that the rest of the committee could do maybe a better job of supporting. So that's...I certainly want to approach that in that way, so...but I just wanted to make sure you feel...
I appreciate that very much, and I think I agree with you that I think our chairs typically absorb a lot of the load for the committee, but on the other hand, I think, you know, all of us actually carry quite a bit of responsibility and also participate in various ways, on subcommittees, during town meeting, and just general advocacy on behalf of the schools. So I appreciate the sentiment. I don't feel pressured into it in any way. I do feel a sense of responsibility. I think that's a good thing, though. And, yeah, I appreciate the nomination.
Are there other nominations that anyone would like to make? So seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Donas becoming chair of the Amherst School Committee, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Okay, so I guess for our first order of business, just in continuing the reorganization process, I will take nominations for vice chair, if anyone is interested in making any. Mr. Nakajima?
I'll nominate Peter Demling for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Mr. Demling, do you accept that nomination?
I am amenable to that.
Great, thank you very much. And I will also then, if there's no other comments on vice chair position, we'll accept nominations for secretary.
Do we have to vote on the vice chair thing first?
Yes, we do. So one of the things that you'll know about me is that I am awful with Robert's rules. For some reason, I've just blanked out on those things, so I will need a lot of support from the committee, reminders, at least until I get used to it, from those of you who are more used to this than I am for these kinds of things. So I will take a vote for vice chair for Mr. Demling. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Can I add that we're now effectively distributing the load for the Amherst School Committee for Mr. Demling's request?
Indeed, you are, yes. So with that, we'll take a nomination for secretary of the Amherst School Committee. And just to follow up on Mr. Morris's or Dr. Morris's comments earlier, the secretary role is particularly important because it actually helps us make the...sort of make up the Union 26, the superintendency for Union 26. So that is the Pelham Elementary Schools. So if there is anyone who's interested in serving as secretary, I will take those nominations. Mr. Demling?
I nominate Ms. McDonald for secretary.
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. McDonald?
I...I will...I'm okay with that. Amenable is the word of the night.
Okay, great. So all those in favor of Ms. McDonald as secretary for the Amherst School Committee, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. So, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the next order of business. Dr. Morris?
So one thing that perhaps, given the agenda might get shifted, is subcommittee assignments for the Amherst School Committee, which is on the last page of the packet. Certainly, it's the committee's discretion when to do that. Just given that one member isn't present, it may perhaps make sense to do it a little later on. But I just wanted to note that that would fall under the reorganization agenda item. So it's at the will of the committee.
Okay. Any thoughts or preferences from Mr. Nakajima?
My preference would be to do it when all the members can be present.
I think that's a fair, fair point. Anyone else? You agree?
I agree.
Okay. So we will put this off for the next agenda then. Thank you, Dr. Morris. Okay, so the next order of business is approving minutes of March 23rd, 2018. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes. Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the minutes of March 23rd, 2018.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Nakajima, any discussion? I hope everyone's had a chance to take a look at these very long minutes. I'm being a little clipped. This is a very short meeting, which was basically just to approve the minutes of February 14th, so literally just a two-sentence item.
It was also the last meeting of our august chair, Phoebe Hazard.
That's exactly right, yeah.
She sailed off into the sunset after that meeting.
Any corrections, comments, changes? Okay, so all those in favor? Actually, I'm going to abstain from this one. So I think it's just...
Sorry, we're just mimicking each other.
And any extensions? McDonald and myself. Dr. Morris?
I'm sorry. So there's not a...you don't need a quorum to approve minutes, but you do need a quorum to vote on minutes, yea or nay. So it doesn't have to be...I mean, this is not a super essential point, but that's my understanding from Mr. Terry. Came up in one of the other districts this week.
So you need a quorum to vote yea or nay, but we have a physical quorum present right now in this meeting?
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's no problem with this...these meeting minutes staying in draft form indefinitely. It'd just be to note that that vote doesn't yield a result either way.
Got it. Okay.
And Mr. Terry was clear that there's no issue with them staying in draft form indefinitely if you don't have a quorum of people who feel comfortable voting up or down.
Okay, but this is presumably something we could bring up at the next agenda as well, right? Just to combine with the...okay.
Yeah.
Although I'd point out that there is never going to be
Right.
...a majority of the members present who were actually at this meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's why it came up in another district, exactly that point, yeah.
A minute editorializing.
These may end up staying in draft form indefinitely. Okay.
Sorry to jump in.
That's perfectly okay. Okay. So, moving on to the next agenda item, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a note that my wife is a preschool employee, so for votes and executive sessions and such, I typically don't participate, but as this is just an update, I will be staying up to date.
Okay, thank you. Is this related to item number four? Is this what you're referring to?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I skipped all the way to item... Okay, I'm the one that can't read.
It's okay, we're just...yeah, it's all good. Okay, so moving on to announcements and public comment, we'll take announcements first from the committee and from Dr. Morris, if there's any announcements. Mr. Nakajima?
My announcement would be, for anyone who just arrived, that we actually have a new chair and vice chair and secretary, and the chair is sitting to your right.
It's been a bumpy start so far.
Just to keep from the rest of the meeting from being utterly disorienting. And congratulations to you all.
Any other announcements from the committee? Dr. Morris, do you want to do your superintendent's update during this time?
Yeah. That'd be helpful, thank you. So first of all, I just want to welcome, while they have been at a regional meeting, our two new Amherst School Committee members, because I think this is the first Amherst School Committee member, school committee meeting that you're full members on. So welcome, welcome to our new chair, not welcome, but congratulations to our new chair and other officers. And I'll just go through this quickly, and this is in the packet. The updated...the typed-out version is in the update. And so we have a new...sad news is that Ryan Harb, who's the food service director, you've met him multiple times, is leaving our district. He's relocating to Family Commitments, as was shared with you via email. Ryan's incredibly dedicated to the program, and I'll share with you, with his permission, he feels incredibly torn, and yet his Family Commitments, which are on the other side of the state, are such that it's not something that he can manage, both his Family Commitments as well as working in Amherst. And so he's going to be kind of working on a slightly reduced schedule, starting in about two weeks. He'll start reducing his time, but stay on board with us to finish the year. Unfortunately, our kitchen managers are incredibly strong, and working with Ryan, working with Sean, can effectively end the year with kids getting fed the good, healthy, good-tasting food that they've been having throughout the year. We've posted the position. I know we already have eight applicants, and there's a longer posting period and some...to get more applicants, although I'm excited about some of the folks that have applied to date. I want to acknowledge Ryan's work, starting an in-service, an in-house food service program, which theoretically you could say it existed before, but really he did it from scratch because it was without the institutional basis of having a large national company managing a lot of that. It's an incredible amount of work. If you're ever in the buildings late in the afternoon or evening, or even the weekends, you often will see Ryan there, and his dedication to the program, to students, has been fantastic. And we've already been in conversations, I have more this week, with him about how to continue that work moving forward with a new food service director, some of our work. And Mr. Mangano and I were in a meeting with the Project Bread folks, with Chef Sam, who's been incredibly popular. Every school he goes out, we see the spike in students having lunch there, and that we are actively continuing that into next year. So a lot of the good work that Ryan has started will continue. And I just want to publicly say I really appreciate Ryan's creativity, because I think in addition to all the hours and all the other things we could talk about, his ability to problem solve has been the thing that has stood out to me in changing over, not just the kind of a national firm to in-house, but actually changing how kids, how our students experience the food service program. And he's taken feedback all the time, he's brought in new recipes, and really worked with the kitchen managers to support a real change in how the food service program is operated. So, very sad to say it, I'm very happy for Ryan that he's doing what he needs to do, and we'll keep you updated as we move forward. We now, switching gears completely, from that announcement, we now have a Facebook page that the district started just a week or two ago. Our administrative assistant, Sasha Figaroa, you met, I think, in the fall around communication, has been the one managing it and working on it, and it's definitely a work in progress. But we are seeing...it was interesting, and I'll talk about this a little later, but we had an event for preschool families on the dual-language piece, and one of the questions we asked, we surveyed them at the end, we just did a quick set of questionnaires, probably a better way to call it, mention it, and it said, "Where did you find out about this event?" And so that was like really, really early on, Facebook's page had just started, and about 40% of families said the Facebook post was where they saw it, which was an aha moment for us, that this is really worth investing more time and energy into, because it was about 26 families who attended that, it was over 20, the sessions, and that's a lot of people who saw it on Facebook. So we feel like in terms of engaging the larger population, particularly the non-school population, which is that that was the challenge, it's been our continual challenge, as this group will talk about preschool in a bit, outside our preschool has been engaging, and it seems like it's been successful.
Dr. Morris, so I just wanted to ask, is there a clearly visible sort of user policy available on the page
Right.
...to let people know that if there's, you know, any inappropriate content or anything that that will be removed?
It is, and it also describes that the Facebook page, it describes the goal of the Facebook page, which is around informing, and if there are questions, it encourages people to do a private message to Ms. Figaroa to then get sent it to the appropriate person. In other words, it's not necessarily a place, like, if a student or family is struggling, it can be a place to send people to the right person, but Ms. Figaroa is not the right person to be able to answer those kind of questions. And it has about...we just use other districts' Facebook pages as a model of, you know, belittling comments and, you know, some information about that.
Great, okay, thank you.
Luckily, there's a lot of good examples out there. Project Safe Childhood, so we were working with the U.S. Attorney's Office, the local one, around keeping safe and secure online. We know that that's a major issue for families with children at the upper elementary level. Obviously, it goes on, but I'm speaking at the elementary school level particularly. So there'll be presentations with fifth and sixth grade students at the three different elementary schools in the 29th, and then a family session in the evening that folks can get involved with. It actually starts with surveying fifth and sixth grade, our fifth and sixth grade students about what are their current online practices? How many of those students have, even though Facebook says 13, how many of them have Facebook pages, Instagram, Twitter, Snapchat? So that it's grounded, the presentation's grounded in what our kids are telling us they do online. And, you know, all the research indicates that the earlier the education can start, the better, once you're talking...if you're talking about only high school, right, that ship sadly has sailed a bit. It may not be all the way to the other side of the shore, but it's not end and dock. And so I really want to thank Diane Chamberlain, Principal of Fort River, because she's really been incredibly instrumental in spearheading this effort for all the schools. All the schools were interested, but she's made great connections around there with the Attorney's Office. And I think the MABE visit, I think I'll speak to in context, so I'm not going to talk about that one now. Into air quality testing, this is something that was approved last year at Amherst Town Meeting, and so we opted to work with the Fort River Building Committee to work on a process, because that group was already formed, and we were going to mimic it for Wildwood, so we did that. The building committee had quite a bit of conversation and dialogue around air quality testing, and so we quickly did an RFP and got it done for Wildwood, so they were tested in the same week, which was the week before break. And the idea is that the testing would happen while students are present and teachers are present, not in a break week, which their quality will look different if there's not 400 or 500 people actively in the school. I also want to thank the teachers, because what the downside of doing it that way is the sampling devices make a really annoying noise. And it can't just be like, oh, it's in this, like, in the cafeteria, we won't hear it anyway. It's literally in classrooms where there have been concerns, in classrooms, like, library, like, different areas where there were concerns. And the tolerance level of our staff and students was incredibly appreciated, and I also think, in an odd way, it functioned as a reminder that we're taking this really seriously. Sometimes when all this work happens and no one's there, it's as if it never happened, and if you talk to the staff of either of those two schools, they heard the loud buzzing all day long. One was on a Tuesday, one was on Thursday or Friday, and I went, I was at Fort River, I think there was that Thursday before break, and even in the principal's office, you could hear it just in the hallways, and people made the best of it, and we'll have the results likely by June. So it's something that when we get to our June meeting, I'd like to bring back to the committee and the community to be able to talk through. One thing that's...oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Demling?
You can finish the top, I have some questions on that.
That's...my last thing is something that's not on the printed page, it's just a fun one that I want to share.
Okay. Yeah, so I think you talked a little bit about, so like, when the results come back in June, you know, like, I'm a pretty greenhorn in terms of my understanding of environmental analysis, but I do understand it's a complex
Yeah.
...thing. It's not a binary, air is good, air is bad, kind of thing. So like, what level of conclusion either way would those results indicate? And is this one piece in sort of a broader take on efforts that you're looking at in terms of the environmental health of both these departments?
Right, so a couple of thoughts on that. One is, I think you're right, it's not a binary...there are some binary elements, like, is radon high, over four, is it not over four? Is it...you know, there are some factors around that. But, you know, picking on radon, because I know more about it, but if it's 3.8, I might say, well, it's under four, but is that still a concern? Right? So I think your point is well taken on that. I do think it's part of a larger effort to affect the air quality, to do two things. One is to address the concerns about air quality, that there's some perception that we haven't, that the district hasn't necessarily made public some of the results and taken this level of rigor to the air quality tests. And the second is that there'll be recommendations made by the company that does the tests for us to consider. I think also we have a bunch of work happening in our schools over the summer. Wildwood in particular will close the day after school lets out and won't open again till mid-August because of the boiler and some other factors, and there's a significant amount of work being done at Fort River as well. So we really want to have it before, because if we do do it after, we want to see, was there a difference? So what you really want to try to do is do it longitudinally, like, have multiple testing times, so you could see what the impact is, not just one snapshot, but multiple snapshots to give you a much larger frame and picture. And I think when Mr. McPherson comes in June, he'll be able to go much more in-depth in terms of the analysis and the implications for it. So my last fun one is just that Thursday night, I'll be attending multiple districts with multiple people, but for the Amherst Elementary Schools, Chris Ackroyd, who's a classroom teacher at Fort River, is one of the winners of the Grin Spoon Teaching Awards, which support, honor teachers across our region, and they have a really nice dinner at the Log Cabin, and the winners get a number of things from the Grin Spoon Foundation, but she was the Amherst Elementary Award winner, and she's in the first three years. So they have different awards for veteran teachers and newer teachers of the profession, but I'm just really happy to celebrate that, and I know some other Fort River staff will be attending as well.
Great. And that'll be something wonderful for the Facebook page.
Yes, it will.
Mr. Nakajima?
I have an announcement that I forgot to mention earlier. So for the Fort Rivers School Building Feasibility Committee, which I think is a butchering of the actual title, because it's a title specific and really long, we met on Monday, yesterday, and we finalized and approved requests for qualifications for a design team to come in and do the analysis of the site and of the building. So it's been, you know, a couple-month process of designing from scratch, the RFQ, with significant help from Anthony Delaney and Jim McPherson and others. But still, the committee's been very, very active, very engaged, have, as you might imagine, have literally debated line by line the entire RFQ, but that's a good thing, because I think that the deliverable we're coming out with, the RFQ we're coming out with, is, I think, not only very good, but one of the funny things about it is, it, I think, keeps its faith with the guidance that was given by the school committee and the extensive effort that this committee made to structure what the mission and charge was going to be following the town meeting vote. And so I think the RFQ does that. There are a couple of sort of mechanical things that are being finalized. It's going to be issued on May 2nd. There's going to be a bidders conference on May 9th in the afternoon between 2:00 to 4:00 PM at Fort River, and then the proposals will be due May 30th. So fairly quick turnaround, but as you may recall, or may not, may or may not know, the building committee, feasibility committee, has three or four, actually, architects and project managers on it. And so one of the things that's been really great about this process is that we've been guided a lot by the practical knowledge, and actually, those four people I'm talking about don't include Jim McPherson and don't include Anthony Delaney. So there's a preponderance of experienced professionals on the committee, including members of the public, who provide, you know, multiple perspectives but are grounded in, you know, how do you do these kind of projects in professional practice? And I think that's wonder...I think it's helped us get to a really good place on that product. Once it's actually finished and published, I guess, I'll make sure we circulate it to you so you can see it.
So you mentioned the proposals are due May 30th. When will final decisions be made?
After May 30th. I don't...I mean, I don't...
Nice round number.
Within the following month, I'm sure. I mean, we're going to...there are going to be interviews, whoever the down-selected teams are, there are going to be public interviews that will be done, you know, in person, and we're going to publish those interviews so that people can come in and see the present public can be made aware and see the presentations by those teams. So, you know, it should be part of the following, during the following month, then however long the contracts take. The contract is essentially a boilerplate contract from the town, and part of the RFQ is requesting that if the respondents have any adjustments that they would feel needed to be made to the contract that they submit that with the proposals, which ideally will facilitate relatively rapid contracting, although anyone who's been through that process knows it can take longer than anyone intends. And then the actual length of the project, once the contract is executed, is approximately 23 weeks, but honestly, the group is still debating whether or not that calendar should be stretched closer to 26, just to make sure that any of the, you know, analysis or homework that needs to be done can be done well and appropriately in the timeframe.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any final comments or thoughts or additions before we open up to public comments? Okay, so moving us along, I will open the meeting up to public comments, if any members of the public would like to make a comment to the committee. They can do so. There's very...all these hands are just popping up everywhere. Okay, seeing none, we will move along to new and continuing business. So the first item on the agenda is preschool update, and I will turn it over to Dr. Morris, and reminding everyone that Mr. Demling had made an announcement about sort of staining from any votes and et cetera.
Yeah, so this is a topic that we discussed in loose details in the budget process. If you remember, there's a moderate budget add to the preschool program, and it's come up a lot over the last two years as we've struggled to be able to have enough slots for the number of students who have come in with IEPs at age three or developed them, or later, between three and five. And we've had to have state waivers to support the number, because we haven't had the slots that we needed. And I think what I shared during the budget process is we're still undergoing a pretty thorough process that you'll hear about in a minute, with staff trying to inform parents about how to address the needs of our youngest students and maintain what the staff, in my opinion, what I heard, because I inserted myself a bit in this process, staff heard were the needs of students. So separate from the number, how are we addressing the needs of the students we have? So I think those are two variables, and I think it's easy to combine them, but I think they're two really distinct things, is the number of students, number of slots, and then some of the changing needs that we've seen in our preschool population, and we're not alone. I was actually talking to Jeanne Fay about this, our union president, a couple weeks ago. She was doing a presentation at an MTA conference, or maybe an NEA conference, and everyone has the same questions, particularly with the younger students, is that we're seeing a change in some of the behaviors, and we're certainly not alone. So I really want to compliment the team that worked on this, so primarily Michelle Regan-Lad, who's a preschool coordinator, Joanne Smith, student service administrator, and Faye Brady, who's student service director. So I think I'll get their presentation up on the screen and hand it over to them to describe both the process, the kind of problem, or the issues that we're facing, the processes used, and where we are in terms of plan for next year.
May I have permission just to lower the mic so that we can stay seated?
Is that okay with the committee? Does that matter for Amherst Media at all?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Perfect height and everything. Thank you, Dr. Morris.
Let me make sure it's close enough. You'll have to tell me, is that fine?
It sounds fine.
Okay, great. So as Dr. Morris indicated, my name is Joanne Smith. I'm a special ed administrator. I've been in the district a very long time, maybe too long to mention, but I have been working with the preschool program for the past 15 years, and Michelle Regan-Lad... working with the preschool program for the past 15 years, and Michelle Regan-Lad is our current program coordinator for, five?
In her fourth year.
So what I'd like to do, and I know it's in your packets, but we also have it displayed, assuming I can manage the slides of Dr. Morris, but what we'd like to do is take you through a process that we've engaged in this year, looking at the needs of our program. And if you're comfortable, feel free to jump in with questions, or I'll certainly take them at the end as well. So in terms of the preschool program itself, so public schools are required to provide free, appropriate public education to children ages three to five years old, prior to their readiness or age enrollment in kindergarten. So I included this slide because I think it's important that you, as the committee and the community, have an understanding about how our program at Cracker Farm came to be a very long time ago. The purpose of that program was to provide special education services to children ages three to five with disabilities. Part of the model development has been, and a strong belief system is the inclusion of what we call peer partners, or as we think about it, students, non-disabled student peers. So what you'll see is, it's certainly grounded in a requirement from the state, and certainly our desire to meet the needs of our community and our students. So if we go on to the next part, and this, trying to capture the words in the best way possible for everything that's happening was a little bit of a struggle for me, so we tried to articulate and outline the highlights for you. So one of the things that we do in special ed at all levels is, we continually look at the students, the needs, and is the programming that we have appropriate to meet their needs, what needs to be adapted, and so on. So as part of that process, we continually look at our preschool program, and it happens to be, I'm not sure how familiar you are with preschool, but we have students who come to us who are referred from our early intervention services, whether it's Reach or Criterion, these agencies are in our community and in our catchment area. So they will then identify through an early intervention agency, or students may be living in our community, and we engage in child find activities where we work with, and we advertise with local pediatricians, preschools, saying it's our obligation to ensure any student who's out there with a suspected disability that we evaluate them and determine if they're eligible for services, and if so, to provide those services. So the nature of preschool is complicated in that, when we've known students at the elementary level who've come through the system, we have a good sense of them already, but with preschool, there are a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainty, because we don't always know who's in our community just yet. So part of looking at the best practices and the programming with preschool is why it's, it's a continuous effort. And what we know is, our population changes depending on patterns and trends, because often, students are with us for two years, some may be with us for just a year or a few months before it's time for them to enter kindergarten, and some occasionally may be with us for three years, depending on various date factors. So when we look at what's been transpiring in our program, what we've seen is an increase in the number of preschool students with disabilities that are particularly more complex than historically, and at the, at the number of students with those complex needs. And again, these are either referred, or they may be new residents. So when we look at that, we know that, in particular, and I think Dr. Morris talked a little bit about us having to obtain a waiver last year, we had, we're supposed to follow a particular ratio in preschool, and where it's seven students with disabilities and eight students without, in each of our integrated classrooms. Well, due to the configuration, the needs of the students, and students being identified, that that number shifted, so we had to go through a process with the state, obtaining their approval to continue operating that way for the remainder of last year. In that process as well, though, sometimes there are students who, because students become eligible as of three, they enter our program, sometimes students don't turn three until the last month of school, the last two months of school, or whatnot. So sometimes, what has, or what has happened, is that sometimes we don't have what we consider the same space that we need in order to meet the individual needs of the student. So last year, we actually ended up contracting with another school district, who the student had already been attending there. And when they moved to Amherst, they agreed to continue the students, so that their programming would be continued and supportive and effective while we weren't in a position to do it. So we had to do that last year. And then this year, as we've looked at our programming needs, what we're finding is, the number of students either on the autism spectrum, or similarly high complex, not high, excuse me, more complex needs is on the rise. Over the years, we see ebbs and flows, and it appears that we're, we're on an uptick right now. And that combined with, we've had a significant, unexpected number of students move into the district in preschool. We've had six, which is very unusual for us. And many of those students are coming in with, again, high needs, where their services and their program and their placement are fairly significant. So looking at that, and looking at the age of the students, and who's anticipated to be with us, what we did is, we went through this process and determined how we, or we were looking at how are we going to meet those needs in the coming year, which then required us to take a step back and say, what are we currently doing, what's working exceptionally well, which there are many, many things, we have strong staff, and programming in students and families, and what do we need to do a little bit different for next year to accommodate all of our learners? So what we're looking at for next year in particular is more of what we would call a traditional ABA-based classrooms, two of them in the morning. These are informed by particular components of applied behavioral analysis, such as verbal behavior and discrete trial training. These are just some of the methodologies, not all of them that would be employed, but they are methodology that are more consistent with the needs of our population for next year. So the other component, and I'll talk a little bit about what the changes on the next slide, but the other component to this is, as the complexity of the students' needs and the specificity of certain methodology, what we are working towards is ensuring that the staff have appropriate time for planning, not only contractual lunch in their planning time, but collaboration in team time. What we know in our early childhood center and our preschool program is, it is most effective when all the service providers or team members have time to collaborate and talk about an individual student's need, and to plan from week to week, what are we doing, and what do we need to adjust, or what's going well, and certainly working with families. And then we also know that we need more time for our preschool to work on curriculum development and adaptation. I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but our preschool teachers are early childhood certified, but they're also special ed certified, and they, I'm not saying they wear two hats, but in some ways they do, and kudos to them, they're amazing educators. Their task is not only to be a preschool teacher, but to also be the special ed teacher as well, who's very mindful of all the different components and the regulations and the paperwork and the supports associated with that. So we ask an awful lot of our preschool teachers, so we need to ensure they have the appropriate level of time for curriculum development, training, and, and one of the things that has stood out over the years, since our early release afternoons on Wednesdays, a decision was made to move away from that early release time due to time on learning. But what we found is, is some of our paraeducators are not getting sufficient supervision time and training time, because it's almost impossible to find time during the day when you're working with three and five, three to five-year-olds. So we are doing it, but we're just doing it in a way that is just not as systematic and consistent as we believe is best practice. Phew, that was a long list. Okay. So going to the next page. I think it's important, and I appreciated when Dr. Morris asked, that we're sure that we articulate what the process was we used to come to what we're, we're putting forward, because we think it's exceptionally important. So as you see outlined, certainly looking at trends is part of it, and looking at our anticipated needs for next year was a significant element. So we've been reviewing that information and data. There have been staff discussions, plannings, and meetings with actually the teaching staff, who are what we call the experts at this work. Without them, it'd be impossible to figure out what would be appropriate as the next step. Certainly, Michelle has a long background in preschool, both as an educator, and you may not be aware, but Dr. Brady was also a early childhood educator as well. So I feel like I'm in good company. So we met, we met with teachers, we actually, in an effort to try to provide an environment of neutrality, we actually had two facilitators versus an administrator or supervisory role to actually sit with the teachers, to have them provide candid, direct input. And then there were other meetings, we took the information they provided, we used that to the degree and extent possible to adapt and modify the proposal. We looked at local districts in terms of, what are they currently providing for models? And I have some of the specifics, if you all want that. And one of the pieces, I think, that adds, and it's low on that list in terms of the next, second to last bullet, is that we had to also look at the logistics. And logistics are a lot, when it's trying to ensure everybody's getting a duty-free lunchtime, when we're transitioning to make sure all students appropriately covered and staffed, and, and transportation and whatnot. So it's a lower level, but it certainly is a real factor. And then finally, Michelle and I have started a process of meeting with the local early intervention directors, to talk to them about our new, our revised model, but to also talk about the process, and how do we improve or enhance our connections and transitions from early intervention to the public schools. So we have met with the local director from Criterion, and we're scheduled on Friday to meet with the director from Reach. So that may not cover it all, but that was the overall of the process. Feel free to jump in if you have questions.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, I think the other piece that I think, from my vantage point, was back in the fall, when, when I was hired, I think, as you know, I went to each school to have just general feedback sessions, and so the preschool rightfully suggested, could we have our own, because while they're, they're based at Cracker Farm, they seem to have the whole program. And one thing, two things I want to say, but one is, I think just about everyone in the preschool came, which said a lot about their dedication and their interest. I think the second thing to what Ms. Smith said, the need for the collaboration time was the, when Ms. Cunningham and I were there, was the overall theme. There were other themes that, I think, also mesh with what you shared, Ms. Smith, but just this feeling both for teachers, among teachers, between teachers and paraeducators, between teachers and the program coordinator, and having that time. And I think, as Ms. Smith said, the fact that they're special ed teachers and classroom teachers also impacts the time, because then there's IEP meetings that happen routinely, and especially for young children, they happen sometimes more routinely than for older children, because things change a lot, because the students are just the age of the developmental level of the students. So that, that was a critical factor in the feedback that Ms. Cunningham and I, I took. So it's not part of the official, this part of the process, but I did share that feedback.
Correct, thank you.
And I think it's just important to note that there was, I think, 22 people present, which was more than at least one of the other whole elementary schools, because I think they were feeling passionate about the program and passionate about some needs that they felt like weren't necessarily being met in the fullest way at the moment, so I just want to.
I appreciate that, and I do want to offer an opportunity for you to ask any questions at this point, but just prior to doing that, I also want to point out, which I didn't before, when I ran through the list briefly, was that there was also a session with the paraeducators. There are 15 paraeducators in the program, given the level of the needs of the students. And three and five, three to five-year-olds really do need a lot of support and staff, even to just do some of the basics beyond anything that may be involved in their IEP. And it was a remarkable meeting, and I will say that one of the paraeducators had approached me and said, we haven't had our time yet. And it was great, because they felt comfortable to advocate and say, and we made sure that there was a time, and their enthusiasm and excitement, and as people who are in it every single moment of the day, they also see places where things need to be adjusted, and, and some of their questions are what they pointed out and said, have you considered this and what about that? It was like, oh, nope, didn't get that, thank you, that helps to increase the dimension. So I wanted to point that out, but before I go on, any questions about what's been shared so far?
I think we're good.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Phew. So on the next slide, what you're going to see is a comparison. On the left side is what we currently are providing, and on the right side is what we will be providing. So right now, our programming is five days a week, and we have five classroom spaces at Cracker Farm, four that were built into the wing when the new section of Cracker Farm was added, and then we, due to numbers, had expanded, and we were fortunate with Cracker Farm, although I know they have some space challenges, but to move into a fifth, and I would say, we are consistently in need of all five of those spaces, certainly to meet the needs of students with disabilities, and we'd love to have more opportunity to provide general preschool programming. So I'm just going to focus specifically in this conversation on the students with disabilities side, as we talk about how this looks. So what we have right now is five classroom spaces, but six classes. That doesn't seem to match up, so I'm just going to explain that to you. What we have is five classrooms operating with a morning program in them. So technically, by how they're identified and how students may be recommended for services, four of the classrooms, it's the same group of students, five days a week. In the fifth classroom, they run a three-day-a-week program, and then they have a four, then they have an additional day, which is our playgroup. Some of our peer partners stay for that, and certainly some of our students with needs may, if the IP team makes the recommendation, will stay as well. So that's why it looks like six classes, but it's one classroom over four days. What you'll note, note with the asterisk, is that our morning programs all include lunch for the students who are attending. Our current numbers, and these are approximation, because there is some fluctuation with students being identified over the course of a school year, or students moving, right? There is some fluctuation, but not a lot. We are built for spaces in the program itself, in the physical program, 35 spaces for students with special needs, and 40 spaces for students without disabilities. This is consistent with the state ratio around an integrated classroom of seven and eight. So mathematically, you'll see, it will add up. We do provide services to students who may come in just for a service only, perhaps to come work with a speech pathologist for a session or two a week, or with the OT or the PT. So we try to do a range of programming. What you'll see so far, am I okay? Sometimes I go too fast, I apologize. But I want to emphasize that the five classrooms in the morning are integrated. We do have some afternoon programming, some services, which right now are under the heading of specialty services. These are services that an IEP, IEP team has determined are additional beyond the morning that are necessary for a student, for us to be able to meet a student's needs and for them to make meaningful progress. At this time, it's three afternoons a week, and there's roughly seven students accessing this additional specialty service. It is targeted, individualized, and non-integrated. And then in, in, there are two classrooms, two other classrooms, that in the afternoon currently offer an integrated longer day for four-year-olds. We have, as a district, been looking carefully at, what are we doing for readiness for kindergarten? So we've had, we've looked at different versions and adjusted and adapted, and so two of our classrooms are integrated longer days for four-year-olds, but these are not classrooms that have been developed and designed to specifically meet the needs of students with disabilities. Yes, it happens, yes, services and, and supports are still in place, but that's not what the, the construction of it was to begin with. And so when we look at, where do we have viable places for students who may surface over the course of the year, where we can bring them into the program, it becomes a little bit more challenging because of the limited amount of time in the afternoons that we have and how it's constructed. So it was a place that we really needed to take a step back and look at it, and look at what other, other school districts were doing. So that's the current. Questions about the current? So that's the current. Questions about the current program?
Could you?
Um, just let me know, what time does the afternoon program end and what time is the morning?
Great. Thank you. So the morning program is 8:30 to 12:30. And then for those students who stay in the afternoon, um, it runs from 12:30 to 2:30. That also includes a nap time. Um, for those who need it, uh, there are some students, when they turn four, need less nap time. Um, so that is just a factor there as well. Oh, there was one other piece I was going to mention. I forgot. I'll come back. Any other questions, though? Yeah?
What, um, so there's five classrooms and, um, they're morning. What are those class, how are those classrooms being used in the afternoon?
So, um, two of the classrooms have afternoon programs. So that would be two of them. Another one has those specialty services.
Oh, okay.
So that's the third classroom. And in terms of the fourth and fifth classrooms, um...
One is the teacher's half-time?
Right. We have one, thank you. Actually, we do have one part-time teacher, 80%, and four full-time teachers. So one classroom is the part-time. And then the, actually, the other classroom, um, that teacher's involved in assessments. Um, so whether the students are there or where she's working on reports or... Sometimes what they've actually done too is when they've needed an additional space in the afternoon to support some of the students who need specialty services, they'll go into one of the, into another classroom that may be available.
Yeah, they cover the team time for the other classroom for three, three days a week.
Okay.
Three days a week, sorry.
Right. So team time. So team time is what we call the collaboration time. It's preschool's ident- term for it. And so right now, this is really important. Thank you, Michelle. Um, right now, our team time is being cross-covered by an, one of the teachers who's kind of a floater in those afternoons, trying to make sure that the teachers can get at least that time to work with their, um, specialized team and their staff. It, I will tell you, it's challenging trying to ensure we get all of the planning time in the team time, um, and, and certainly the duty-free lunches for the, for all of the staff.
Thank you.
Great question.
Do you have a question?
You look, you look like you had a question.
I wondered if you had a question.
I do, I do have a question, actually. Um, so thank you for this presentation. So far, it's been, uh, just really informational. Um, one question that I have is actually related to, it looks like, looking at this grid, that we would be reducing the number of days per week, um, based on, you know, the need for extra collaboration and all of that. But I'm wondering, um, if any decision or, or have, has any thought been given to the impact on, on the families? Um, because that's, seems to be the number one concern from families, right? Is the number of, you know, hours during the day and then the number of days a week that the program will have their kids, right?
Thanks for looking ahead at my slideshow. I appreciate that. Um, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is to go through those pieces and then talk about the parent piece as well. Um, so if, if that's okay with you, can I come back to that?
Absolutely, yeah.
So when you look to the right, what you'll see is, is the four days a week. So, um, in looking at, um, existing models that are out there and researching with, um, neighborhood districts, neighboring districts, you'll see that some of, or what we're proposing is not atypical. In some ways, it's consistent with other districts. Uh, when we look at, and this is why I tried to frame it at the beginning, in terms of what is the, what is the function? What, what is the primary function of the program? And the program is, is designed to meet the special education needs of students. And so it is, it can be a challenge to go to five days. I mean, to reduce to four. Right now, we have not heard from families that that's problematic, which is actually quite surprising. Um, I'll note later that we did reach out to them in mid-March and offered to connect with them. But to date, neither Michelle nor myself, um, nor Dr. Brady have heard from anyone. Um, I think for, for us, the frame has been, and, and certainly is, is true, is that we're trying to design a program that is strength, is strong at its core to meet the needs of students. And how do we work within the constraints of what we have to make that happen? Um, so in the four-day-a-week model, as I mentioned, we have not heard concerns from families, but there's no doubt, I'm sure, that for some families that is, is viable. Um, so let me walk through a little bit. But this, so again, we're looking at still six classes. Um, four classes running a morning program that will include lunch. Um, in that fifth classroom, it will, um, instead of being solely morning, it will actually have a morning session and an afternoon session. What you'll see is, is that fifth classroom will run four, four days a week in the morning and then three days a week in the afternoon. What that does for that particular teacher is it doubles that teacher's, um, teaching responsibilities because basically we're saying you have a full set of students in the morning and a full set in the afternoon. Um, what I do want to point out is the morning session and the afternoon session, um, the hours are two and a half hours, um, in each. That is fairly consistent with what, that two and a half hours is consistent with what we learned from other school districts that are only running half-day programs or morning and e- afternoon sessions. Um, two and a half hours. We're, we're going to watch it closely. Um, there are some students who, when we think about that fifth classroom, their needs may pertain mostly to social skills, maybe some language or articulation-based support. Um, and so our experience has been, even when we look to this year, to our three-day-per-week, um, classroom that we have been running in the morning, that it's been successful, that actually the three-day-per-week classroom filled up first out of all of the classrooms, partly because of family desire. But the decisions or the recommendations are based upon how to meet the, the needs of the student. Um, and finding that we have three-year-olds, that often it's, the afternoons, um, may be harder or that many days a week, the separation and so on. Um, in our research with other districts, some of them actually specifically say, "The morning program is only for three-year-olds and the afternoon program is only for four-year-olds." We're trying to be cognizant that students are at different levels developmentally. And so we, we, at this time, don't feel like that's the route we want to go. Um, but certainly that will be taken into consideration in the conversations with families. So the AM and PM session, due to the, the length, um, and the timing of when lunch, the earliest lunch to be provided is at 11:30. The morning session will be dismissed before then and the afternoon session will be, will arrive after, um, in a way that would impact the, the amount of time on task instructional. Because working with students to eat lunch for three, four and five-year-olds is a time-consuming project sometimes, you may, those of you may remember. Um, so when we look at what we realize with offering this fifth classroom with a morning session and afternoon session, we realize that increases our capacity to offer more special ed, education spaces. And I think this speaks, um, misadonias to what you were referencing earlier. And when we look at the general ed spaces, that number does decrease. And part of that is as a decision around the specific special education programming that I'm going to talk about in the next two boxes. So hopefully it will highlight or, or help explain that number. So again, uh, we believe in the integrated classrooms. That is still appropriate for many, many students. But what we know in looking at the needs of our population coming in for next year or continuing next year, is that we have students who actually need more intensive programming in a non-integrated setting. And again, this is consistent with our autism and ABA programming. However, what you'll see is it will say two classrooms, um, specialized only in the morning with seven students per classroom. But then it talks about the integrated afternoon. What we know is it is still important for students to, um, work with their non-disabled peers. Um, we value it highly. And so what we were trying to do is, is merge best of both worlds to give the level of intensity of the programming, but also provide that peer-based and that opportunity for generalization. Um, so in order to provide that level of intensive programming, um, that's why the number of general ed slots decreased because those two, two classrooms are specialized only. So that's where part of the math makes that difference. I, I will draw a connection in that if you look at this year to the projection for next year, we do have specialty services only in the afternoon right now. And based upon the number of our students who have the needs and the intensity of the programming, um, we're not getting as high the yield of outcome as we would like. We know students are progressing, but we believe we can move them a little bit farther and, and continue on that trend to put them in the best possible position to enter kindergarten, um, in the least restrictive environment. I think I'm going way over time. I did notice that I only had 10. Um, so I, if, with your permission, I can go a little bit more quickly?
Please.
Okay, sorry. Um, so just as I mentioned before, we contacted other districts. There's a range in programming. Um, the longest day we found was roughly five hours, which is consistent with two of our classrooms for next year. There are part-time morning and afternoon sessions, again, two and a half hours. Um, different districts offer some of the programming anywhere from two to three to four to five days a week. Um, and again, integrated classrooms to substantially separate and mixed age group to just three-year-olds and just fours, I roughly mentioned. Um, in terms of the response from families, as I mentioned before, families were notified in writing, current families in mid-March, um, with an opportunity to reach out and connect with us. We haven't heard from, from anyone with a concern of shifting from five to four days. Part of that may be too because we also graduate a number of students, um, to kindergarten. And so some of this comes in to, to play with either who's continuing or who's coming in. Um, in terms of what are we doing for students? We do have IEPs, which are legal documents to follow, which are developed based upon individual needs. Because of the shift to four days, it does require us to go, um, to reconvene the team for each of those students to talk about, you know, in this, how are we going to continue to make sure their needs are met and, um, they make meaningful progress. And then in terms of response from families, um, with, with non-disabled students, um, we haven't heard from those families. I think part of that is, is, uh, it's an opportunity. The model is designed, um, and we certainly want, um, young students in there as part of, um, just high-quality early childhood education. Um, but also with an understanding of, we're seeking and providing this as an opportunity as well for, um, peer models, for the design of the program, which is to meet the needs of the students with disabilities. The only one thing I did want to put in, it's at the last sentence, but I think it's important to note, there are a significant number of families on the waitlist, um, which is unfortunate. And I will say, aside from the shift in the model, there's more on the waitlist than would have been anyway, um, than we've ever had. And, and I guess I would attribute to that of some of the closings, particularly maybe the high school preschool program. Any other programs?
Possibly. Um, I think also we have a significant number of four-year-olds who are staying. So that contributed also to less opportunities, less openings.
That's correct. Right. So they haven't quite reached five by the cutoff. So, thank you. And then just briefly, the implementation support. Um, we know that what we're engaging in is going to rep- require a high degree of, of support beyond what we currently do. So Michelle and some of the staff have actually gone to look at other programs and models to see what they're doing, to see what their ideas are and, and to ask questions. Um, we know that we have specific or additional training to do with our staff. Um, and as you can see, we're sending staff out to do some training or we're doing training internally, um, using early release days, some professional development time. Um, and we're fortunate because of the district initiative, um, under Dr., Dr. Brady's guidance, where we had actually some of our paraeducators go through, um, behavior technician training, which is consistent with this approach. Um, and then finally, um, our preschool program experienced, it says an increase in SLP FTE by 30%. So what that really means is, is we didn't need 30 more percent of a speech pathologist to meet the needs. But what that is reflecting is, is that we have a preschool special, a speech pathologist who went through our BCBA training program. Again, another initiative with Dr. Brady that's been highly successful. And so she is a...
BCBA.
Oh, sorry, board-certified behavior analyst.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and so what this model will look to do is to provide that additional support as we look at the two classrooms, so that we have that highly specialized, um, staffing in place. And just to note, it wasn't in, in a, increase to the budget from a straight direction. Um, we know that the small amount that was allocated through the budget process or is, is there, that will use to offset, um, and that through this, we're hoping to decrease some of our contracted services or we've had some staffing adjustments of assignments, bringing someone at a lower rate, um, for a different portion. Okay, sorry, I went way over. Question?
Thank you very much. Um, so I want to open it up, uh, to the committee if they've got any comments or questions.
I did have some.
For Ms. Smith.
There was a lot.
Mr. Bingham-Ladd, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Nakajima?
I'm going to start only because I have a really simple question. Um, you've mentioned before, and the superintendent mentioned before, that under, I think, state guidelines, the current ratio of special needs to non-special needs students was seven to eight. And you're now proposing changing that ratio substantially. Does that mean there's some other program or regulation that would then govern this program? You know, so what is it and what should we know about it?
So the, we're not changing the integrated ratio. It's still seven to eight in any of the classrooms where it's integrated.
Okay.
Um, so relative to the two classrooms that will be specialized only, um, the regulation actually allows us to have more students, given our staffing ratio in those classrooms. But what, what we know is, um, we have, um, we're positioned to begin some new programming, targeted programming. And what we would want to do is, is focus on fidelity and efficacy before we start saying we want to put even more students in there. Um, but we're not changing what the state requires. I think it's eight, eight students to a teacher and...
You mean for substantial, so you can go to nine?
Oh, nine with one teacher and how many paraeducators? Yeah.
I've looked at that a long time.
So what we're looking at in those two classrooms to start is, um, the teacher and four paraeducators to seven students. So we're not, in effect, changing any of the requirements by the state. What we're looking at are the needs of the students and the staffing associated to meet those needs.
Can I, can I try this a different way?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm not, I understood what you said. That means when you described earlier at the beginning, I hate to say this, but I'm substantially dumbing this down for me because I was drinking from a firehouse. You gave a lot of information and I want to make sure that I understand some of the core dynamics because otherwise it's easy for me to get lost in the weeds of the different elements of the program change. Um, you described also at the beginning that you were seeing different demographics or characteristics of the enrollment. So then would it then be fair to say that you're obviously, as you mentioned, you're still keeping the same ratio in, in classrooms in which you're having that balance between special needs and non-special needs students, but that you're then shifting gears to emphasize support for this growing population of students that have increasingly complex special needs?
I think I understand what you're saying. Um, so when we look at having two classrooms that are special education only, what we're trying to identify is those students who have particularly complex needs that might have been, um, in all five classrooms. And what we're trying to do is actually consolidate so that we can provide, um, very targeted programming and support and methodology. So when we think about those other classrooms, what we may not see, and we don't have a crystal ball about who will come down the line, but we've been meeting and Michelle's been gathering data about who will be coming that we know from early intervention. So the idea is, is that if you had a student, or let's say you had seven students that we have currently, who have very high programming needs, they may be in a classroom right now where the level of the type of individualized programming or very, very small group is not afforded in the same way. So we're basically saying we're going to cluster these students here.
Okay.
Does that answer that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, to me, it explains the, between the first slide that talks about sort of the problem definition, how things are changing, and then the implementation slide, which says, "Hey, we're mixing the classes around this way and it's all different." It, I'm just trying to draw a connecting line distinctly between, you know, why you see the numbers change, why the classes change, and what the problem definition was that was defined at the outset. That's, that's helpful.
Thank you for asking.
Oh, please, Dr. Brady.
Oh, please, Dr. Brady.
I don't know if I'm as talented as doing this sitting down, but you can stand to.
Then I have to move the whole microphone.
So I think one of the things to keep in mind, kind of going to a wider lens, and this is a lot of detail here, is kind of the overall way that we do special education planning. So we do, it's great to have well-developed programs, and they're fantastic as long as the students who we have in front of us and who we anticipate having in front of us have the profiles to need those programs. Special education, I apologize to you, but a couple of years down the road, we may be coming back with another redesign, because special education programming should always be changing based upon the needs of the students. So this change, although there were some challenges in the program model that existed, as Joanne was saying about collaboration time, it was overall working well for most of our students. What we know now, we have incoming students, or current students, as well as incoming students who need some different programming, hence the reason for the change. So be prepared, two years down the road, don't be surprised if it changes again.
And Dr. Brady will gladly be the person in front of you at that time.
And thank you, Dr. Brady. That actually, I think clarifies, in my mind anyway, you know, a lot of the questions that had been forming, because I think much along similar lines. It is a lot of information, and you're looking at it, you know, it's difficult to not see it sort of as a net loss of, you know, certain places or spots, right? But it makes sense to think about it in terms of shifting priorities based on the incoming population and the students that you're actually trying to, whose needs you're trying to meet at this point. I will say, though, that I think, you know, it's important for us to really sort of go the extra mile in informing families about this program change and trying to solicit, again, even if it feels redundant, trying to solicit some input, right, about this program change. And not to, you know, look for anything there if it's not there, right? Some families may just not be that concerned about it, and maybe it's not that big of an issue. But I think it's an important enough shift, at least in the expectation of what this program has represented up until now, that, you know, we really want to make sure we're sort of dotting our i's and crossing our t's, right?
Yes, it is. Okay, I just saw it streaming to the water, so I just wanted to make sure.
Don't look at it. There's, yeah. Fire hydrant opened back there.
I'll go to safety first.
Those are good instincts, Dr. Morris. So anyway, I do think that it's important to, you know, to go that extra mile. And I think, you know, the committee, we can even incorporate this piece of it if it makes sense in, you know, the weekly updates that we do, you know, perhaps in an upcoming bulletin article, to help support the work that you're doing already, you know, with the community. But just to try to solicit some additional input, and, you know, if folks have concerns, now would probably be the time to raise them, right? Not after the fact, because then at that point, it might feel like it's too late.
Can I trouble you for one additional comment? Because I think one of the things we're focusing on is the programming and the changes to be able to meet the needs of what the Crocker Farm preschool is for students with disabilities versus what you'll see, the decrease in the number of slots for just general preschool students. And that is a challenge. I think a couple of years ago, we changed the programming to try and do some extended day to meet more needs of the community, to have more hours of preschool. And our infrastructure, separate from even budget, but we just don't have the building space to add more preschool. So that part is a challenge and is a loss for the community, and I don't know that there's a simple answer for that when space is what it is.
Yeah, there's, at a certain point, there's a challenge for space and budget, right, in both, you know, simultaneously. And it's really a shame, because preschool is so incredibly important, right, for every student, not just special needs, but also sort of more general population.
We would fully support universal preschooling.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, just on the point of communication, just, I think for the special needs population, just, I wanted to ask, and if you don't know, it's okay, but just, when are those IEP meetings scheduled? Because I think one of the benefits of having to have IEP meetings to revise that is, you know, it's another communication device, and actually, it's a tool that's individualized, which is the best-case scenario, so.
We're still in the process of setting those up.
We're still in the process of setting those up. We have had one so far.
Yeah, so just, you know, I think...
Do you have a timeframe that you anticipate?
Thank you.
Oh, in the next month, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments?
Just one small question. So the decrease in the general ed, are there any current students that won't be able to come back next year?
No, they're all returning. Some people have declined for various reasons. I think maybe six applicants declined for various reasons. They had to make a commitment at another place at a certain time, or it just didn't meet their needs. But no, everyone is returning so far, and one is moving, so, yeah.
And when you said applicants, you meant new applicants, not current students?
Yeah, the current students are all returning, except for the one that's moving.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just some clarifying questions, because I'm new. The waitlist, is that only general ed students are on the waitlist? So if you are a special ed student, you're guaranteed a spot?
That's correct.
Okay.
As determined by the IEP team, yes.
And as a parent, I've got a preschooler and a kindergartner, so this is all very fresh to me. And, you know, I never even considered the Crocker Farm program because of its hours, and with two parents working, it just didn't work. So I'm wondering if I were a parent who's working and I have a special ed child, and the hours at the Crocker Farm school don't work for me, are there any other options in terms of getting that support? I know that, you know, there are folks who visit my son's daycare, who help support kids who have special ed needs, or might have been in the REACH program. But could you talk a little bit to what are the other options for those members of our community?
So I would say historically, there have been students who have received support in their related service provider, might go to their current private preschool program. What we're, right now, because we're on the uptick with complex needs, we're finding more students need to come in and be actually taught by a licensed special ed teacher. So we have that. We have students who come in just for related services. It is complicated in that what we do know is we have some families who the hours of the program are difficult for a variety of reasons, whether work or transportation. And so what we have is students who are concurrently enrolled in another program. And so what we would do is, for those families who can't provide transportation for students on IEPs, we will take them, if they're within the AMERST town lines, we'll take them to their other setting.
Okay.
So we try to work through that, because our charge is to do everything reasonably possible to have a student be able to come and access the services that the team has identified or needed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So I'm going to move us on, because I have a few other items. No, thank you so much. This is incredibly informative. Really appreciate all of you taking the time tonight to present to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving us along. Next item on the agenda is warrant review, and I think Mr. Mangano is up.
So update on the warrant review process. So some of you may have seen the packet of warrants going around to be signed. You also may have seen an email with electronic versions of the warrant. So I may have missed a few this past week because of the vacation week, but the plan is to start doing that for all region AMERST warrants going forward. I'm also, I've also asked my accounts payable staff to look into trying to schedule in a way that you're not always getting that in the day of. So maybe the Friday before, or if possible, a week before. So they think that's possible. They just need to sort of think about how they work on warrants and the timing of when they do that. So it's not that there will never be day of warrants emailed to you, but they're going to look at that process and see if they can do it earlier. And, yeah, so that's the update.
Okay. Any questions, comments from Mr. Mangano on that topic?
I totally thought this was the town meeting warrant.
I never thought that.
Because we have town meeting coming up, and it's not on the agenda. I thought it was going to...
I would imagine that would have said town meeting warrant review, but, you know, I could see why that would be confusing, yes.
We also had one of those over vacation week.
Right, okay, right.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Okay, sorry, stay up here for the next one.
Yes, please. So next item is the fiscal year '18 third quarter budget update.
And do you have this or no? Do you have this in your panel?
I don't know, we don't see it.
Thank you. Oh, of course.
Is this one of the signatures?
Yes. Thank you.
Let me see.
Did you see something? Did you tell us something?
Yeah.
Back page of the paper.
Oh, yes, he is. Not the back page of the third quarter budget update.
No, 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 back page of the paper.
Okay, thank you.
What he would want in space, I think, is the prompt. Okay, so I'll do a quick orientation to the format, just because we have two new members. So chart, that's on all the quarterly budget reports, has the categories on the left. It's split between payroll accounts, so anything that goes to our payroll system, and our expense accounts, which are anything that go through accounts payable. Next to that is the original appropriation, so that's the original budget that was voted last March, two Marches ago. Next to that are any budget adjustments that have been made to date. Next to that is the revised budget, the budget adjustments made, a projection of FY '18 expenses. For some categories, we project out the whole year. Some categories are more sort of, they trickle in throughout the year, like supply spending, things like that. So it's a reasonable projection of what we think we can have confidence in, but it doesn't project all categories. Then available budget. And then the last category that we don't usually include, but because this is a little bit of a difficult quarterly report, I have included it, which is a comparison of the, so the available budget shows the FY '18 expenses compared to the revised budget. The over/under shows the FY '18 expenses compared to the original budget. So it just gives you a sense of, yeah, we've made some transfers, but how are we doing compared to the original budget that was voted? So that last column's not always in there, but I wanted you to have a sense of that when we talk through this. So the FY '18 budget is currently projected to end with a deficit due to rising health insurance costs and increased staffing needs. Payroll accounts are projected to be $71,700 over budget due to the following endpoints. The first is increased ELL staffing at the district level and at Wildwood specifically for $39,000. A little more detail, there's a new paraeducator at Wildwood, a new position, and a .5 FTE increase in the district professional staff. There was an increase in special education paraeducator support totaling $44,600, which was approximately 3.0 FTE, offset a little bit by some staff turnover savings. We had an increase in special education district professional staff for $82,300. It's not necessarily an increase in the FTE of staff. This was more around staff turnover. We had some more expensive people replace less expensive people that have turned over. We also had, so we get circuit breaker, which is a support from the state to offset special education expenditures. We use that first on our out-of-district tuitions and our special ed expense accounts, and any amount that's left over after using it there helps support special ed payroll. Because we had an increase down in the expense account side, we don't have any to help offset the payroll side. So it shows up as an overage in payroll, but it's really driven by increased special ed expenses, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then we had some shifting grants. The inclusive preschool grant, again, is being phased out. So we also had an additional classroom teacher at Fort River, which was, cost $51,600, and that was due to class size and trying to even out some of the class sizes. It's been offset, so the overage has partially been reduced by additional school of choice funds that were approved, I think at the first quarter report, when we first found out about the health insurance and all that stuff that was going on at that time, we approved an additional $75,000. So we started the year using, so we had $375 approved of school of choice funds to support the original budget. With the additional $75,000, that brought it up to $450,000. Yes. And administrative reductions in staff turnover, we had $70,800 savings. And that's mainly just classroom teachers turning over and less expensive classroom teachers coming in. Sorry, yes. Contracted payroll accounts are currently projected over budget due to higher-than-anticipated special education extended day and year costs. So those are costs that are incurred for, really, summer programming, that some students require summer programming. Sometimes we have more grant funds to offset that programming. This year, we had less grant funds to offset that programming. Substitute costs are projected to finish over budget by $20,700 due to three long-term leaves. One of those leaves was offset by shifting existing staff within the district that we didn't incur additional cost, but the other two leaves have required substitutes, long-term substitutes, to fill those positions. And that often incurs additional costs because the person out is also being paid while you're bringing in a substitute. Shifting to expense accounts, so in response to the second health insurance premium increase that we had during the year, we froze all of the school discretionary spending accounts and said those are only for essential spending for the rest of the year. We kept that measure in effect. We've kept that measure in effect up until this point, because we haven't seen a positive shift in the budget for AMERST. But that's one thing we did to try to help shift some additional funds into the budget to offset the health insurance and special education. In the special education section, accounts are tracking over budget due to an additional out-of-district placement and growing in-district student needs, some of what you heard during the preschool presentation. These needs have generated additional costs for outside service providers that come into our schools. Our district-wide support is over budget due to higher-than-anticipated homeless and foster student transportation costs. This is a legally required cost that we do get reimbursed, but you get reimbursed the following year. So we're seeing our highest level of those costs that we've seen since I've been here, at least. So that's another development. Utilities are tracking under budget due to fewer fuel purchases than initially budgeted. This is because we were able to fill up the tanks at the end of June last year, so we started the year with completely full tanks. So it's a positive development. Transportation is over budget due to vehicle maintenance. We had, we've had a significant uptick the last two years in vehicle repair costs. We had to replace a transmission in one of the vehicles this year. It may be a sign that our sort of vehicle fleet in general is aging. We do have a replacement schedule for buses and for some of our vans, but we do have quite a few vehicles in our fleet, so it's something we'll have to keep an eye on. Food services is showing signs of improvement, just continuing what's been shared in prior quarterly reports. So we've extended this chart through February, continue to see mostly higher than, higher participation rates than we saw last year, and certainly over the course of the entire year, participation is up, so that's a good sign. Risk and benefits are projected $464,700 over budget, so that's the big one, due to the two mid-year premium increases for health insurance. Included in that figure, though, is $60,000 of retirement incentives that we have budgeted to prepay from this year. So the retirement incentives that would normally be paid next year for retirees retiring at the end of this current year, to help next year's budget, we projected that we'd be able to pay it on this year. So included in that number is the $60,000. The district will need to identify additional funds to fill the budget deficit. One possibility is the special education stabilization fund that we set up last year. We set aside $150,000 to offset special ed expenditures when they exceeded the original budget. This year, they have exceeded the original budget by about $157,000 for the additional staffing needs, additional placement, and higher in district contracted service needs. To access these funds, both the school committee and the select board would have to approve by way of a vote. And if approved, we would, our goal would be to use as little of that as possible. We wouldn't assume we were going to use all of that. We would try to still finish the year as good as we can to use as few of those funds as we can. And then below that is a proposed budget transfer. So we also set up a new process this year of bringing sort of quarterly budget transfers to the board for approval. So the transfers that are being proposed between cost centers, $41,129, which are leftover contingency funds in the control accounts, it basically is anything left over, that would be a decrease. Utilities, we would decrease again the budget because we have savings in the heating costs that I mentioned. Food services, because the program has been doing better, we have about $22,000 of savings. So those would all be decreases to those budgets, and the increases would be to payroll to help offset the increased staffing costs and to insurances to help offset the increased insurance cost. And there's a motion there if you want to approve the budget transfers. Sorry for the not-so-positive report.
So is the possibility of accessing the special ed stabilization fund to a certain amount different than this motion to move money between the transfers?
Yeah, so the transfer that's moving money within the existing operating budget, the stabilization fund is outside of the operating budget, so that's a separate fund that's been set up. We funded it with residual operating budget funds a couple of years ago, town meeting approved, might have been the last town meeting approved that. So that's outside the operating budget. That would be additional funds.
So when do you need to know, at what point do we need to make that call of whether we're going to access that, and how much would we, would we know how much we're going to need to access?
Yeah, I mean, probably in the next, no, later than June. I mean, sooner rather than later, I think what we're thinking is, we would sort of ask for permission up to a certain amount, and again, we would only go up to that whatever is needed. We wouldn't say we're going to use this amount no matter what.
how much would we... Would we know how much we're going to need to access?
Yeah, I mean, probably in the next, no later than June. I mean, sooner rather than later, I think what we're thinking is we would sort of ask for permission up to a certain amount, and again, we would only go up to that whatever is needed. We wouldn't say we're going to use this amount no matter what. But certainly within the next month or two.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, just to add to that, what I'd like to do is to put it on the next month agenda because it involves, and I know Mr. Mangano said it, but just to reinforce it, it's not just a school committee decision, actually has to go to the select board, and before June thirtieth is when we'd need to access it. I think the advantage of waiting till a month till this body meets again is of an even finer sense of how much we need to ask for and where things are a month further down. We won't ask too early because we... Well, I think it's highly likely we'll be asking to access it. We'd like to have the most information for you all and for the select board as possible.
So, I appreciate that. So we're currently seventy-one thousand, sixteen dollars in deficit in terms of what we're projecting our budget today. What... Some of the reasons why, that are enumerated here, of why we would be over budget are things that we have already known for a period of months. They're additional, you know, slots and things where we had to hire people. The healthcare is obviously has been a sort of a moving target. I guess what I'm worried... What I'm... Why is this a word? What I'm interested in is what are the variables at work that would get you to say that seventy-one thousand, sixteen is likely to be the final number versus half again as much? Whatever.
So, two things. So at the last quarter report, we weren't sure we were going to finish with a deficit. Things were trending a little better between the second quarter report and the third quarter report. We had significant new special education expenditures, and we also had the increase in the homeless transportation. So those are sort of recent developments that weren't there when we did the second quarter. So just in terms of how do we get from the second quarter where things looked okay to now where things are projecting a deficit, those are the major changes.
This, by the way, is of interest to me because I remember the earlier report and I remember things weren't...
As bad.
Weren't looking as bad.
No, and I think you specifically asked a question of like, what are the variables that could...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I mean, what are the ones that are still... What are the ones that still play between now and a month from now?
Yeah, so I think the variables that are still there are... Special education's always a variable because we can't always sort of foresee those student needs and what they'll cost. This doesn't project everything, so there's some costs that are going to continue to roll in, like tutoring and translation costs for ELL students, things of that nature. This does project all the payroll out, projects utilities, health insurance, the factors in the big areas, but it could still trend a little bit worse. And we have actually updated it since... So this was done on March twentieth. We updated it last week. We updated it, and it has gotten a little bit... Has gotten worse since then, too. So it is trending in a bad direction. We do have a number of sort of strategies that we can look at to try to get that down a little bit, but I don't think it's going to dramatically go below seventy thousand if it goes below that at all. Other... So I'd say variables would be special education, any... We have a number of things that are sort of encumbered in here, purchase orders. Dr. Morris and I talked about, we're going to review all things that are currently encumbered, and we're going to look to the directors to say, are these things absolutely needed? Or can we liquidate those funds to reduce this number? I think those are the main things at this point. I mean, there's always sort of things that could pop up, but we're getting pretty close to the end of the year. We think health insurance is in a place where we know it's not going to increase again. At this point, we've got a plan for what that's going to look like. So those will be the main things. And then the unforeseen staffing needs that arise in the next month or two.
Yeah, if I could add to that, just the other variable, I don't think likely, but you know, as our neighbors to the east found out last year, is we get our charter numbers, our final charter information, like the last day of school, around the last day of school. And, you know, because we get reimbursed for the first year, not other years, there could be, you know, not huge impacts because the huge impact of a big change would be next year, but when we're talking about this amount of money, a couple of students that weren't reported earlier in the year that only get reimbursed because they don't... Charter school students aren't fully reimbursed for their first year because that line isn't enough to cover it, and so that could also have an impact, either positive or negative. Wow, we actually had less students than originally reported, and that could save, you know, some cash versus the other scenario as well, just...
Yeah, and the other thing, I was actually talking to other business managers today, which the committee might want to have a conversation about in the future, is the homeless transportation, because that is a really significant cost. It's going to... Right now, it's projected to be about fifty thousand dollars. We budgeted fifteen-twenty-ish. It's all over the board from year to year, what that number comes in at. And there's been some changes in what, I think, the Department of Children and Families, they do some of the foster care transportation. Some of that's fallen on the schools to take on and not been reimbursed. So in the house budget, they did increase how much funding was available for homeless student transportation reimbursement. Since we're a municipal district, that goes directly to the town. Some districts have a process where that reimbursement goes to the town, and then in the fall, the next year, next budget cycle, they increase the school's budget by the amount of the reimbursement. Now, the town's very generous to us in terms of the funding, but it may be something we want to consider, if that amount continues to grow and we continue to have an increasing cost in that area. At a minimum, we may want to ask them, can you set up a reserve for us? So if we ever have a year where we have, you know, homeless transportation expense comes in significantly higher, that we're not taking from other areas of the budget to cover that cost. So a couple of districts said that they... Their current arrangement with their town works that way.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I have a question. And I guess if we're going to have this on the future agenda item, we can talk more details around that, but just in terms of special education stabilization fund, you mentioned that total special ed costs have exceeded the budget by about seven thousand... Well, if there's a... If there's a transfer from the stabilization fund, that would be a hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then the total cost is a hundred-and-fifty-seven, is that right?
So, right now, special education costs have exceeded the original budget, all special education accounts, staffing expense accounts, by about a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. We have a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in a reserve. I don't think at this point we would need all of it. So when we come back at the next meeting, we'll sort of have a proposal of what we would ask you to approve. It wouldn't be the full hundred-and-fifty thousand, we don't want to use all of it. We would probably need, based on what other sort of strategies we can use to reduce the deficit, whatever the balance is. And so we'll have more information on that the next time, but we're not expecting to come back saying we need to use the whole hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Dr. Morris?
Just put... Just, and I know Mr. Mangano said it, but I want to reiterate that if not for the significant health insurance increase, we would be successfully finding other ways to not have this issue where we'd be going at the special ed stabilization. Because when you set up a thirty-some-odd-million-dollar budget, there's going to be some variances up and down in different areas. The challenge for us this year is sort of all the ways that we can manage unanticipated costs has really gotten sucked up by that health insurance increase, and it doesn't allow us the flexibility to be able to manage it in the way that we would in a more typical year, even with some of these unanticipated costs, be able to do that. So I just wanted to come back to that because I do think that number is much larger than the other changes that we're seeing on the page.
Okay. Ms. Spitzer and then Mr. Demly.
Regarding the special education... Stabilization Fund. So if we were to spend some of that money, how would it be replenished?
Good question. So we would have to have a plan for replenishing it. So there's sort of two ways we can replenish it. One, we can do in the future what we're trying to do at the region, which is in our operating budget, we have a small sort of contingency in special education for out-of-district placements. And Amherst this year, I think it was like twenty thousand dollars. What we did at the region is we... You may remember, we did sort of a modified vote where we said if that amount isn't used during the year to cover unanticipated out-of-district needs, then that amount will be contributed to the special ed stabilization fund. So we could slowly sort of over a number of years replenish it that way, which I think is a good practice anyway because it just... It sort of creates an automatic mechanism where if we don't need these funds, it starts building that up. There is a cap, so we can't do it forever. It can't be more than two percent of net school spending, which is around four-hundred-thousand-ish for us. But we could do it that way. We could also do it the way we did it the first time, which is if we have a good budget year, say in FY nineteen, we could go to the spring town meeting and say, hey, we're going to return X number of dollars. Can you appropriate that amount of dollars into our special ed stabilization fund? And that's how we funded it in the first place. Yep.
Yeah, just a big picture kind of observation, you know, we've... Mr. Demly and I have been doing some things. The region in terms of state advocacy for charter... Not charter, for transportation reimbursement, which is a regional issue, but you talked about the homeless transportation, so the line... I'm going to get this name wrong, the McKinney-Bento?
You got it.
Yeah, okay.
That's a lot.
So another... And then the charter reimbursements, you know, so again, two other things that are mandated by master drum of law that the legislature refuses to fund, and it becomes this big-picture funding issue. And, you know, we heard it from a very sympathetic representative who said the money just isn't there to fund at all. And so it's a pretty big revenue ballot initiative, initiatives occurring this fall, you know, so just even if your attention is laser-focused at the K-6 level, there's a lot going on that can impact our district. So...
And I think...
Dr. Morris?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the particularly unfortunate part thing, and Mr. Mangano politely mentioned this before about McKinney-Bento, is it's actually pitting agencies because the money's not there for DCF, right? It's pitting who pays for what in ways that I think are really unfortunate. We're talking about students who are struggling with some significant life factors at the moment, and we always... Our commitment is to do right by kids, and we always do that, and I'm sure DCF and other districts do it. And yet, the incentives... The incentive structure is not such where it's promoting that. And I think it leads a lot of tension, frankly, between districts when we have homeless students living really far away, begs some questions, and districts have to work it out, and then also the relationship with other social service agencies. And I think that's particularly unfortunate when you're talking about students undergoing, I think what I all would agree is a traumatic experience. So I just want to say that on the educational side, the money has implications actually for how we do our work and how we do our business with other agencies, and I think we do right by students, and we continue to have that as our focus, but there are real financial impacts.
Thank you. Ms. Spitzer?
I just wanted to clarify that, isn't McKinney-Bento a federal law? So is the money coming from... Not coming from... It's not state funds, would it be federal funds? Or am I just...
That's a good question. I'll find out the answer. I'm not sure if the ultimate source is... I want to say it's state funds, but I will give the answer to that.
I think it's a federal regulation. But I agree, just, I think it's essential that we do provide the service. And it's just unfortunate that there's such a demand for it.
Yeah, and I'll just, just for people's orientation, the family center is the primary group that manages and supports students. I mean, everyone does, but in terms of the front line of who works with van pools around transportation, how are students who come to our district... Kind of it's a technical definition as homeless, it's not just a casual term that's thrown around. How does that work? And they do an outstanding job of outreach to students and, again, doing right by students who are joining us and who stay for often long periods of time. The financial aspects and some of the just logistical pieces are particularly challenging because many of our students who fall under McKinney-Bento live really far away. So separate even from the cost, just the logistics and the impact on students and when they're getting a van to get to the school and how they're getting home and if they want a place, like, all those things are particularly complex.
So if there's no other further comments, there is a motion if someone wants to make that. Mr. Demly?
I moved to approve the budget transfers as shown in the budget transfer table of the FY18 third quarter budget report.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, chugging along. We have too much time here. I'm kidding, we're way behind. So the next item on the agenda is executive summary of per pupil cost study by UMass. And Dr. Morris, do you want to...
Sure, and I think this can be a relatively brief update in terms of your comments. So just for some orientation, a couple of years ago, the town of Amherst and UMass came with a strategic agreement. It included a aspect where a study was to be done about the per pupil expenditures and the impact of tax-exempt housing on students... Oh, excuse me, on the district. So there are students in our district, and the number varies, but it's generally been in the fifties the last couple of years, who live in tax-exempt housing in our districts. Most of them are in the Amherst public schools, and that's why it's an agenda topic here. About eighty percent of them are Amherst public school students, who live in tax-exempt housing at UMass and how to account for the cost. Just also want to put parameters, so this is not a... We're talking about a school committee meeting because it relates to schools, but this agreement is not with the schools and UMass, it's with the town of Amherst and UMass. So I've been working with folks at UMass, but also Paul Bachmann and Dave Zollmack from the town, who are really leading the charge on the larger study that this is a... A larger agreement that this is a part of. We talked about this earlier in the year. A couple of things slowed the study down. This is an executive summary because I wanted to ensure that all of you on the school committee, before we got to town meeting where there's often, there may be questions about this, had an opportunity to receive the executive summary. You see, it's in draft form, it's still being worked, but I felt and advocated that you all see it before town meeting starts because it's likely to come up as a question. The full report is still being developed, and so I think I can walk people through very briefly the structure of this report and then just take feedback because as the Don Hewin Institute is doing the study, they meet... They've met with us, they meet with... By us being the town, UMass, and myself representing the schools, and I can take any feedback back to that group as they're working on the full report, which will be released probably sometime in the summer. Is that okay?
Sounds great.
Can I do a quick summary? So I'll say it's been a very collaborative experience. Parameters, what we're looking for in the study. One additional parameter is there's... This is only... The only thing in the agreement was to study it. This was not an agreement to fund anything that comes out, right? It's the idea was to do a study. For UMass to fund it, rather. So looked at our expenditures. You know, basically, the first piece is it was a data... Dive into our data of how much do we spend, what's the per pupil cost, with the real focus that the per pupil cost is funded from multiple sources. It's not just coming from property taxes, the state's contributing. It's also coming from the place that non-parents with... Or residents of Amherst without children in the schools also contribute to the school. It's not only you get taxed per kid. So there was some helpful kind of language that we... A common language that we developed around that. It talked again about property tax being the largest revenue source for the town. So yes, the state does fund schools, but the largest funder is the residents of the town of Amherst, just doesn't pay for all of it. I think just one thing that's gotten confused, I think, in the public dialogue is it's not talking about like... It's not talking about Amherst, the college students in general, it's really talking about families living on tax-exempt housing at UMass. So for families with children, they may be graduate students, they're living in taxable income, taxable housing. That's... This study is not looking at that piece. It's really just looking at the mostly North Village, but a couple other families and a couple other places on the UMass campus as well. So there's five, you're on page three, which is the last page of the executive summary. There was five cost-per-student ways to do estimates, and this is what the folks at the UMass Don Hewin Institute are studying. One is looking at per pupil expenditure plus ELL students because there's a higher rate of ELL students among those who live on tax-exempt housing as compared to our general population, sort of speaking language that's not clear. There's more, a higher percentage of ELL students in this population than there is in the general population. The second is just looking at our per pupil expenditure in general. The third is looking at per pupil cost less state aid, so essentially what residents of the town of Amherst fund for the per pupil cost, what that percentage is. The fourth one's looking at the property tax, just looking at North Village in particular as if it was an average, you know, consistent with the average Amherst parcel of property. And the fifth one is looking at the per property tax of FY18 per North Village unit, and what that means is if you assume that North Village was taxable, how much tax income would come in from that development? No matter how many kids come to our district, just if you plop North... Take North Village and plopped it in somewhere in South Amherst, how much tax revenue would that come in? And that's based on the town's estimating of home values. how much tax revenue would that come in? And that's based on the town's estimating of home values. And so we're looking at all of these different ways that one could come up with a reasonable estimate of the impact, financial impact of tax exempt housing on the Amherst public schools. And that's sort of what the executive summary describes in, in a nutshell. And again, I'll take any feedback that, that the committee has either tonight or I know you just got this rather recently. People can certainly email me because it, the work, the larger draft is still in progress. So there's time for your input to feed into a larger, more formal draft that just to come. Sorry, that wasn't the most smooth explanation. I apologize.
No, it's fine. Mr. Demling?
Um, yeah, so thank you for working with, with the town and UMass on this. I guess a couple of, if you're taking feedback, like back to Donahue on, on things. Couple of things I, I would like to see is what's the percent of units in the complex that have kids in the public schools? And compare that to the percent of kids, sorry, the percent of apartments in general in Amherst that have kids in the public schools. That is answering the question, does this apartment complex disproportionately provide a higher number of, of students to the school? And then the same question for, of the kids that are going to public schools, do they, what percentage go to charter schools? And so is there a higher percentage of those students when you compare it to all students in Amherst? So again, is it disproportionately, you know, feeding that number of charter schools? And I, I, I wouldn't, I know this is only looking at tax exempt housing, but just in general comment, you know, because this is a complex issue, you know, I just wouldn't want to go away without saying, you know, there's a lot that UMass I think does for our schools that's a value add that you can't put a dollar amount on. And so I really appreciate this kind of deep dive. Let's get as spreadsheety as we can in terms of, you know, getting the numbers right. And it's good to focus down on that level. I always try and remind myself, this is a, it's a complex evolving relationship. And, you know, I've seen UMass professors and students selflessly giving over their time, volunteering in ways that we wouldn't have available to us if we didn't live in such a university rich town. So I guess it's just sort of the backdrop I'm always thinking about when I'm also doing that kind of hardcore data analysis.
Yeah, thank you. And I agrees.
No, I would second that. I generally think, you know, UMass brings a lot to our schools and also our community. So the comments I have should not, you know, in any way question that. But I guess what I'm concerned about, and we may, you know, I'm coming in late to this. But it seems to me like it shouldn't just be North Village, it should be all tax exempt property. And I'm curious about maybe a little bit of background on why we chose to just, I mean, I understand that's where the families live. But I mean, in a town, you know, the retirement community pays taxes to support our schools. And so do, you know, the housing where all the single people, you know, live. So the idea of just focusing in on the taxes we're losing from the family units seems just a little too narrow. And I'm curious if that was part of the agreement to do this study or if that was something that the Donahue Institute and you decided to include to the focus because it seems too narrow.
It was part of the agreement was to look at the impact of tax exempt housing in terms of family units on the Amherst public schools.
And I mean, just to, to jump in, I think there's also a little bit of history here from what I understand, right? I think this has been a, a topic of, of some consternation for some time in the community around, you know, the fact that there, that the university has specific housing for families that is tax exempt and that they also happen to be sort of the richest guys in the neighborhood, right? And so there's, you know, an impact there that, you know, for many, I think in the community, they have felt like that has been an unequal exchange, right? And or an overlooked perhaps exchange. And so drawing some, some clarity from, you know, this, this study is incredibly important because I think people have been looking for it for such a long time. I just also wanted to say that I think this, you know, just to, to reinforce, right? That this is sort of very preliminary information. And that we're hopeful that the university will, will take this and, you know, will, will take this into consideration as, as they're moving forward with any, you know, kind of decision-making or anything like that. But that it is, you know, I think as, as Mr. Mangano pointed out, just even in our most recent budget update, that every dollar counts and, you know, so trying to ensure that that accounting is happening in a, you know, kind of above board, clear way. And that the community understands, you know, where the money is, if there's any money being lost that, that, you know, that that's being accounted for is, is incredibly important. So.
Yeah, so is it anticipated that the answers to these cost estimates are going to be done this year or at some point?
Yes, this year.
This year, okay. May I just say, because it said, remember when I got to page three? And I was ready to go to page four, I'm playing, cool, the next page is going to have all the answers. And I got to the next, and then there was no next page. And I'm like, oh, this is just telling me what they're studying. So I'm looking forward to seeing the answers. You know, it's, it's an interesting challenge. I, I, as a general observation, and this is something we've talked about before around the demographics of different sending districts in the community. But you can see like there's sort of a natural life cycle of housing. And years ago I did an analysis of the impact of mixed income affordable housing on municipal budgets when I was, when I was at the Donahue Institute. And when I was looking at it, we found that empirically, you could basically look at the enrollment from different residences of students, you know, over a period of twenty years. And it, what it did is it proved intuitively obvious is that you have a family move into an apartment or a house and they have kids, the kids that are whatever age they are when they move into the house, they migrate through the schools. And then there's some period after the kids have graduated from schools in which you have empty nesters who are no longer drawing services from the schools, depending on their age or actually, or their age or other needs. May not have, but typically don't have other demands, they're placing up public services. And so they go, they migrate through the life cycle of their tenant, tenancy from being sort of net consumers of services to net contributors to the town. And so one of the things that I find very problematic about, you know, analyses of this type is that it's, it's easy to look at an individual household and say, you're not paying your fair share. When even apart from other issues of sort of like, is that really what we are as a community? Is that really, you know, there are all those kinds of things, but even if you just look at it as straight dollars and cents basis, there's going to be a time in someone's life, it's like, what is Ecclesiastes, the bird song, turn, turn, turn?
That's right.
There, there are times in people's lives where they're going to need other people to be doing things that are helpful to them. There are many more times in your working life in which frankly, if you're just going to be mean spirited and sort of a penny, you know, miser, you're going to be like, well, wait a minute, I'm giving more into the town than I'm getting back, right? And if you do a cost accounting, you can figure out how those things even out over time. And so there's an element to which this makes me uncomfortable because it's, 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 it could lead to asking the wrong questions. I think the irony is in this case, because of a place like North Village, it actually doesn't have that same life cycle function. Because what you have is you have grad student families that are moving in and moving out. And if, and so it's not actually the same families, it's not the same grad students, it's not the same kids, right? And so there, there is, there is unfortunately an element to which you could actually pick on that housing and say, by programmatic design, and this has nothing to do actually with the families in the housing who are benefiting it or the kids who are benefiting from our schools, literally by UMass's design or any other institution that has this kind of housing, they're setting up sort of a, I hate to call it this, but a dead financial loss to the town by having tax exempt homes that, that are in fact creating additional demands on, on the town. So it's a really challenging conversation. And, but I, I think there are two things that strike me on it. One, it's good to get the data, it's good to get information. Two, I think it's actually important to contextualize it for the broader community that the vast, that this kind of accounting is not actually appropriate or even relevant to the vast majority of, of our families and neighbors. It's not even just inappropriate, it's like empirically inaccurate, it's analytically false. And then, and then if you ask the narrower questions, I think it's also important not to, not to unintentionally demonize or marginalize the families themselves and to pull it back and look at it precisely in the context that I think Ms. Spitzer was talking about, about how, hey, look, we've got a lot of tax exempt property in our town. A lot of it could even say potentially have, if not legally unrelated business income or activities. You know, they're programmatically often run far afield from what you classically think of as being an educational function. And there's fiscal impact of that too, right? And this is one of those examples. And so it's useful to be fair but clear.
Yeah. And I think adding to your comments, I think there's been multiple times in the process where I've felt uncomfortable and actually pulled, encouraged them and asked them to pull things out. For instance, we're talking about fifty some odd kids, ELL numbers are actually so decrepit that I think it is worth at least acknowledging that, whether we, you know, whatever happens with it. But I pulled out, you know, the special ed numbers were all relatively similar and really identifiable, right? And so we're talking about fifty-three kids or something like that. That's, you know, could we quantify the cost of the special needs of this, of those fifty-three kids? We could. Do I want to do that? No. Really uncomfortable, you know, look at free just lunch, like there was a number of those variables that, that we opted, or I opted as the district representative of this group. Just saying, you know, that's not relevant, you know, and it's going to change all the time. And if we're looking for, you know, I'm, I'll speak for myself, if we're looking, if I'm looking to engage with the town manager and what to do with all this data, you'd rather have more consistent data over time and trends than wow, you know, these three high needs kids are going to, right? That's not reasonable to talk about with UMass, it's not reasonable, it's not comfortable for me to talk about when it's so identifiable to a specific community. I think the other thing that Mr. Demling and Ms. Spitzer talked about as well is that UMass is really, my experience is they're really good neighbors. Do we need to do something, you know, something come from this? I sure hope so. And, you know, I had another meeting with the same group of people at UMass who I'm working on this with about an increase we've seen and we've spoken about before, and ELL students unrelated to North Village, just about the scholars program they have at UMass and how do we best support students who are here for a couple of months at a time who often don't come in knowing any English. And so we're, we're developing a plan of action of kind of working with UMass this, because it's mutual interest. And I think the sense I've gotten from UMass the whole time as this has gone on is that there's a mutual interest in this area as well. So I just want to contextualize that piece as well as, as no one is dragging their feet or not wanting to engage in this. It's really, as you know, it's really complicated to empirically evaluate this situation and move forward with that.
Can I just follow on? So it's just, I think, I think, I guess that you're, what your follow-up is sort of focusing to me the point though, that in my mind, when you pull back a little and look at it, I don't mind at all having a conversations grounded data that tries to assess the relative impact of tax exempt properties on any number of services we have as a community. And particularly if it's chronic, how do you address it, right? I'm sure that's true with probably EMT calls or something in this town, you know? I think, I think the language and the focus of the report would be bleeding over to the inappropriate. The more it focuses on the families and the kids who are there.
Absolutely.
I mean, one, as I pointed out earlier, and we all know, they change all the time anyway. So it's not even the same families. But also it's just, I don't want members of our community feeling like they're considered to be themselves personally sort of a dead loss for our town. And to the extent that the dialogue goes that way, it's just the wrong dialogue.
I completely agree.
Just one more quick note. I, I, I second what Eric said, I think focusing instead on the property tax loss or potential property tax loss that we're experiencing rather than the students' needs or the number of students, like you said, fluctuates. And then the second thing I would say is, I think in this conversation, it's important to note that, at least with Amherst College and UMass, I know there's a lot of churning in faculty and they're trying to attract young faculty. We're going to be looking at our schools. And so I think there's a strong mutual interest in keeping our schools as strong as possible because it'll make Amherst, College, Hampshire, UMass, all, you know, more able to attract young professors. So that may be something else to, you know, it goes both ways.
Yeah. And that's been very clear from the, the UMass side of things, that they're highly invested, frankly, both personally and professionally with individuals that are, that are leading the charge from UMass in, in the Amherst public schools and in the region as well.
And just one final thing, and then I think we probably want to move on, is, you know, I think in that introduction, especially because this is an executive summary and this is the piece that ends up getting shared so much more broadly, right? It actually may benefit both the university and us to incorporate some of Ms. Spitzer's comments just now about the mutual benefit that this, you know, relationship brings both to the families, you know, and to the community. Both by increasing sort of the rich diversity of the, of the town, but also providing, you know, an excellent education for students that are coming in, you know, from out of town, however long they end up staying here. And, and really thinking about this study as a potential to come up with a creative solution moving forward, right? And this is an opportunity for us to glean information, you know, help address some of the, the shortcomings in, in accounting that we, we understand haven't been accounted for a long time. And then also simultaneously come up with some, you know, creative planning for that. So, okay, moving on. Thank you very much, Dr. Morris, for presenting that. So we now are at the dual language exploration update.
So, and this is in your packets, but I just want to roll through since about a month ago, both what's transpired, different groups that have engaged, have been engaged in discussion, some of the evolving nature of my thinking on certain aspects, as well as some next steps. And there's a document that's not in the presentation, that's, I guess the second to last page in your packet, which I'll end with, but it didn't fit well in the presentation and frankly, I got it done a little later. Yeah, so it looks like this. It's a one pager and it's just, it more thinks about the response and decision point timeline from the school committee superintendent end and less from the implementation curricular end of things.
Groovy.
I know. The other people did the animation and not me, but it's cool. So last month, I went on field trips to Cambridge, Massachusetts and Princeton, New Jersey, both of which have dual language programs. So I think worth noting, and I think this is later in the presentation, is that Princeton's in the third year of having a dual language program. It's a neighborhood school, zone school only, an existing school. Cambridge is in their thirty-second year, I believe, of their dual language program. And, and it's actually all the elementary schools in Cambridge have a controlled choice model of attendance. So there is no attendance zone. It's, it's only by lottery, you know, and there's some, lots of complicated variables in the lottery, which I can get into a little bit later. So what was really helpful is because of a faux snowstorm that was supposed to hit Boston, Cambridge actually got moved back a day. So I saw Cambridge on a Friday and Princeton on a Monday. So it was, it was neat to be able to be in both places. And Dr. Brady and Renee Greenfield went with me to Princeton. So I had, looking particularly at a special ed focus when we were there. And sort of interestingly, Dr. Greenfield was then, later, unrelatedly hired as the assistant principal at Fort River. She was prior, prior to that in the instructional support special education role. So kind of interesting how things work. So I'll speak a bit to Cambridge to start with. And I try to use images a little more than words in this. So one thing that was notable is just, there was a lot of similarities, even more in Princeton with curriculum. So the, the book on the left is Handwriting Without Tears. It's the Spanish version of Handwriting Without Tears. And so there were a number of things, like here's the larger frame I would put on it is, I saw really good teaching that looked really similar to the really good teaching I see in Amherst. I just saw it in two languages. Like, but it wasn't magic. It wasn't like, oh my goodness, right? And a lot of work went into how that worked to make that hap, to make it happen in two languages. But one of the ahas I had was that, yeah, there's two languages, but good teaching is good teaching, right? Which it seems obvious, but it was helpful to be in that environment. And I, while my speaking of Spanish is not good, my comprehension skills are decent enough where I was able to make sense of the, the teaching in both languages. Amigo School, which is the school in Cambridge, so I said, it's, it's in the thirty, thirty some odd years. And they have at the K to three level, kind of an eighty-twenty model where there's one teacher who teaches most of the day in Spanish, a little bit in English, and then they transition to a fifty-fifty model later in the day. They actually made that change based on changing demographics in their schools. It's been, what the, the principal said, and I think this is later on, is they could fill the, the waitlist to get in the school would fill another school the same size as this school. So it's a very popular school. One of the concerns there is actually that the shifting demographics I referenced, they have fewer Latino students than they had ten years ago. It's becoming a much more, the, the challenge is that their, their rate of Latino students and bilingual students is going down as it becomes a more popular option for monolingual English speakers. Some of that has to do with the change in the demographics of Cambridge more generally, right? So it's not only affected by who chooses to go, but some of it is as well. And they've actually had to make some changes because they don't have as many, as many native Spanish speakers as they'd like in the program. So they've made some programmatic changes over time. One thing that you'll see on this, which you won't see in Princeton, is they do a lot of blending. So So the example, the, the winter hat, and then, uh, the example on the right, where they have word walls that are done bilingually. Um, in Princeton, as you'll see, they're, they have a very different approach towards, uh, how they operate in both languages. I think the, the thing I could say, um, I'm just gonna speak about Princeton for a second, and then I'll get to the themes. I wanna go too ahead of myself. So Princeton was a great match in terms of the curriculum, so they use the same math, uh, curriculum. They use the same language arts curriculum. Their science curriculum is really similar. Demographically, it looked a lot more like our schools, frankly. Um, their demographics are pretty identical for, um, our elementary schools in terms of Latino students. Uh, African-American students, multiracial students, they have fewer Asian-Australian-American students and more white students. But, um, it was more similar in some ways. And because it's the third year of implementation, I was, we were speaking to the same group of people who, who started the program. Which in Cambridge, we're talking to multiple generations beyond. So really helpful to see, like, thirty years in, what does it look like? And three years in, what does it look like as well? What was also unique in Princeton was that part of the school still is in dual language, right? So a couple of grade levels are, and then a couple of grade levels are not. Um, and that was really helpful. Um, but what you'll see, uh, the reason I have the images of particularly the one that says Primavera, um, on is that's a very similar Small Moments kind of story that you'd see in our primary grade. So if, if any of you have young children, that should look really, the page should look similar in the image. Um, so, uh, that was, uh, really interesting to look at. In terms of themes, um, right, in both schools, Cambridge principal just said it more clearly, it's not just the language. It's, it's culture and social justice. It's really clear, it reached through both, both buildings. Cambridge was only, the whole school is dual language, and Princeton, two classes per grade level are, one is not. And they were really clear in Princeton, it doesn't matter if you're learning in Spanish. The culture piece and the social justice piece comes through in the monolingual classroom, just like it does in the dual-language classroom. In Princeton, they were really clear, and, and I heard from teachers directly, English teachers who knew no, knew no Spanish. I'm a better teacher because of this. This is the best professional development I experienced. To have to think deeply about language development and work collaboratively with another teacher has changed what I do. And I heard it from, from folks in Cambridge as well, but I heard it more clearly, I think, from the Princeton groups because it's, it's newer. Right, I, I mentioned the waitlist piece, um, and in Princeton, you know, around kind of interest. Said, no week goes by where I'm not getting calls and emails, and people literally moving into the community park neighborhood. Um, there's a little more difference between, demographic difference between their elementary schools in Ca- in Princeton than there is in Amherst. And this is, um, they're starting to worry about their physical capacity around space, um, because they're getting so much interest. So I described some of these things as I went. Um, one of the really unique things in Cambridge relative to the earlier conversation is they now have a junior kindergarten program specifically for four-year-olds. It's not a integrated program, but it's a way to start dual language sooner, uh, because the researchers say the sooner the better. And so they have this program, and perhaps because I have a four-year-old, I was just amazed at kids who came in, granted it was March, but came in in the fall as monolingual speakers of one of two languages, and their ability to be conversant, um, in both languages was really remarkable. Uh, the bridging piece, that was the one way I referenced earlier, so they're, they're intentionally having both languages up at the same time. Um, which is, is something Cambridge is doing. So Princeton's the fifty-fifty model, so, right, each classroom's different. Um, like, the kids are half the day in English, half the day in Spanish. Um, and math and science are taught entirely in Spanish in this school. Social studies and much of literacy are taught in English, and phonics is essentially taught in, in both languages. Because the, the idea is that phonics actually operates differently in both languages, and you can't, it doesn't transfer. So you really need to have phonics in both languages. Both schools use the same phonics program, um, which I'm like, in the name of at the moment. Um, but I believe it's like, it's the longstanding program used in, in Latin America as well. Um, and this, they don't bridge there, so they're very clear. When I was in the Spanish room, I was spoken to in Spanish, I was not to speak English. Uh, and it was really clear, and what they found is that particularly for Spanish-speaking students, once the blending started. What Princeton found is, once the blending started, it got too easy to rely on just the Spanish, and they weren't getting enough English instruction. Uh, which I, I know when I talked to Madison, that's one of the reasons they went from eighty-twenty to fifty-fifty was, it felt great for the monolingual English speakers. Their Spanish skills were great, but the ELL students, the Spanish-speaking students weren't getting enough high-quality, um, English instruction. Um, so it was, it was a nice, it was a neat experience for me to, you know, get asked in Spanish, do you speak Spanish? And I could say in Spanish, en boquito, and, and I could listen, but my ability to communicate was, was somewhat constricted. And we walk out the room, we could have those conversations, but they're really clear. Uh, what they're finding is when teachers, um, they had a lot of English teachers with some, like my level of Spanish knowledge, I'll just put it that way. Uh, so I'm a bad Spanish language model, right? If I'm speaking Spanish to someone, they're not learning Spanish the way it should be learned. And also, it was just getting confusing for students, right? That they were really, they're finding that it was really clear for students, you just Spanish in one space, English for another. And we don't really backtrack on that, uh, because students are getting half the day in their, their first language. Um, so it was interesting to see the differences, and I, I definitely debriefed this with, um, Phyllis Hardy and Mave, and, and she had a lot to say about as well. Princeton had a lot of discussion about, uh, the math-science entirely in Spanish all the way up. Some districts actually change by year. So math and, like, let's say in this model, math and science are in Spanish in, like, K, grade two, grade four. And, and they flip so that kids are getting academic language in, um, both ways. And so that's something that we'll certainly be looking at exploring. So enrollment policy-wise, Amigos, as I mentioned, is one of twelve elementary schools. Just to get a sense of the population density, which matters, you know, sixteen thousand roughly people per square mile, we're, we're just a bit over one thousand. So in terms of transportation, like, it's, it's apples and oranges, uh, to be very frank. Um, I think I ref- I referenced the shifting demographics, and the, the lottery's quite complicated. But I think Ms. Rorones brought up at the last meeting about the sibling and others, but I know you brought up the piece around siblings. And, and that is the, like, the, one of the primary pieces in the lottery, um, just around keeping families in the same school. Uh, Princeton, it's one of four, Community Park's one of four elementary schools. Population density is actually remarkably similar. It actually felt really similar when I was there, just walking around town. Uh, I'd never been to Princeton, New Jersey before, but other people may have, but it, it did feel really similar, uh, that they had more snow than us. As odd as that was, yeah.
This year.
At that moment, I was there. We missed that last, uh, one of the March snowstorms that they did not. Um, and so they have a lottery within the enrollment zone, so what that means is within the community park zone, two classes are, um, but dual language, one is not. They've only had to use it once in the last couple of years, because generally about two-thirds of the student, the families choose the dual language, and one-third does not. Um, they did have to use it once, and, and, um, siblings and Spanish proficiency level were the big priorities. Because they're much like everybody, you wanna have good language models in both languages, and Spanish. And in Princeton, it's harder to find good language models in Spanish than it is in English. Uh, and siblings was the other piece, uh, as I mentioned. Um, so curriculum highlights, and I, I'm sorry, I'm going over this sort of quickly, I could stop if there's questions. I can just roll through and see if there's at the end. Um, so in Cambridge, um, I thought it was really interesting, the kindergarten experience being really different. Um, and, uh, so they really do less direct instruction for the first four months of the year. Basically, until the January first, it's all about develop- developing social language, um, and social relationships between students. And that was true in both, in both sites. Princeton slightly less so, Cambridge slightly more so. But what they found was that, um, students need to learn to be students, and that's true in every kindergarten classroom. Particularly when they're learning two languages, the, the cognitive demand on students was so great. That once they had that piece down and they felt more comfortable communicating, the academics actually went really quickly. There was a change. They didn't, I used to have that model in Cambridge, but kids were feeling overwhelmed, um, and they weren't making impressive progress. And they're seeing in their, um, assessment results that kids are making more progress when they start more slowly with kind of true academic content at the beginning of the year. There was one teacher who very much commented, it's like the way I taught kindergarten fifteen years ago, and, you know, standards and, right, some, some critique of how we've kind of advanced the kindergarten curriculum to be something that perhaps developmentally, uh, not we in Amherst, but we, um, more generally have. Um, Estrerita was the Spanish phonics program and, and some of the differences in use. Um, the other thing that I would say in Cambridge, they exclusively pulled out for ELL, uh, which, um, is very different than what we do in Amherst, and, uh, in Princeton, it was much more analogous in terms of, it was push-in, pull-out based on student needs.
Dr. Morris, would you mind, uh, explaining what that means?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Pull-out, push-end?
So I was surprised, I'll just say, I was, uh, no lack of greatness for the experience and no critique. But I was surprised that in Cambridge, if you had ELL services, it never could be, those services were never offered in the room. In other words, the ELL teacher never came in the room to support the instruction. It was always that the student left the room to receive it. Um, we have a mixed model based on student proficiency, a whole host of reasons. Um, it's not an IEP like what was discussed before, but we try to individualize as best we can our service delivery model on ELL, uh, for ELL students. And in Princeton, it looked very similar, you know, that there were ELL teachers who came into the classroom. And then for some students, they did need more intensive pull-out support. Uh, an interesting question for, uh, Spanish-speaking ELL students is, where do those services happen? Do they serve in, in Spanish, or they happen in English? And, uh, sort of an interesting debate about, you know, what's, in terms of language development, do you wanna boast, bolster students' primary language first before you work on their second language? Uh, this goes all the way back to the early two thousands, and question two, different question two than people are remembering from last year. Um, uh, about language acquisition, and I think both, both schools frankly are struggling with what's the best approach? And trying different things and trying to figure that out. Um, but it was neat to see really familiar things in a language that, uh, I hadn't seen instruction in in some time. I think this is consistent with what I shared last month, but both schools excited, you know, the cross-cultural friendships and relationships to be more common. Uh, I walked into both schools, the first thing I saw in both schools ironically was two second graders, one mono- one student who was monolingual English. One student who came in monolingual Spanish, having a bilingual conversation, by like, bilingual, uh, one student was speaking Spanish, the other student was speaking English. They clearly understood what they were cha- saying and joking around, and one of them was like, probably not exactly what they should have been doing. But I was sort of amazed at these two students casually doing, because I don't really see that here. We don't have many students who can engage in dialogue in one language and understand another, um, or enough of them, at least where there's a critical mass. And, and, and so I saw that when I walked in both schools, and I saw it throughout the school day. Um, both schools stated that it wasn't just about the language again, it was about the culture. And again, even for the monolingual class in Princeton, they're getting a healthy amount. Princeton actually had, part of this, they had some small level of Spanish instruction for all students. Um, and they've maintained that for the monolingual English class. Uh, but what they've noticed is the shortcomings of that approach more generally around just the language acquisition. When they compare it to the dual-language approach, that it was really just for exposure. And not that, maybe that's worthwhile, maybe it's not, but they were doing it for a long time and realized that it wasn't really having an impact of students when they got to the secondary level. If they took Spanish, they weren't advancing any quicker. It was, it was really an exposure, um, course, and they're reevaluating what they wanna do with that. In both schools, when students came to the school mid-career, mid-academic career, who spoke Spanish, they really benefited from being part of the dual-language program. Uh, less so if they were monolingual English speakers, and in Princeton, they really have learned to design their classrooms, the monolingual classroom to be a little smaller to start the, like, in kindergarten, because they're gonna gather more students over the course of time. And they made that mistake the first year, where they evened out the kindergarten numbers, and now they have a monolingual class that's larger. And, uh, the dual-language class that is smaller, just because it's harder to replace students that leave from the dual language than it is from the monolingual class. So that was one of their things they learned, they had a lot of them, but that they shared is to be really thoughtful about how to approach class size, uh, as you, as you look at this. Um, family engagement, um, both have robust family engagement, uh, workshop series for families and children in the program. Um, both emphasize the program should not be for, um, both schools, um, if students are gonna be here for a year, it's probably not, especially monolingual English students. It's not the best use of their time to be in the program, because it really takes, as Phyllis showed us, it takes time for that language acquisition to occur. Princeton actually has that on their, um, lottery form, is, you do plan to be in the district for at least three years. Um, because if not, probably not the best program. Uh, high attendance is critical, um, for students who are gonna spend the summer mostly not learning, um, not hearing more of one language than the other. So, um, it's a, uh, more intensive focus than the, on that program than they have in the other. Um, they expressed that Latino families are much more connected to the school day, and that both schools have, have experimented with having the workshops for families alternate between English and Spanish. They've always have translators there, and what they've found is that it really builds a lot of empathy for English-speaking parents to have to be translated to. That's not their experience in the United States. And they're seeing some cross-cultural family relationships form from that, and, and a different level of empathy. Um, so some of the concerns that monolingual English parents of like, how am I gonna help my student with their homework, really shifts that. And that actually came out in one of the family sessions as well, which I'll talk about, family sessions here, um, in a bit. One other thing I should mention is Princeton, uh, has started their parent guardian organization, Collaboration School. They've started to have, like, summer refreshers for students and families, um, and families can be sometimes invited, which is kind of a neat thing. Um, and the, for the first time, they're doing it before the kindergarten for next year, so they're just to ease that transition. But they've actually mostly focused on, once students are in the program, how do they continue in the program, given that there's a ten-month, ten-week gap between June and, and, in their case, September, when they start school? But involving families in that has been kind of a, what they've described as a really neat experience. Um, because the families can at least learn some survival level of Spanish along with their children, who are usually much further advanced in one language or the other, sometimes both. Um, staffing, so bilingual special ed staff and other staff is essential. Um, I would say, one of the districts, I'm being a little, um, coded here, um, really regretted not changing. They, they were, um, worried about pushback, and they didn't change staff members between schools to make this happen. And they really regretted not taking a harder stand on making sure the staffing was totally appropriate, even if it upset some staff who would be transferred. Um, and they're sort of living with some uncomfortable, uh, remnants of that right now. Uh, equally important was that all staff members are educated, so yes, you want the, um, dual-language folks, uh, the people speaking in Spanish educated and how to teach in that model, but equally important was how does the English, how does the teacher's teaching in English get professional development about the model as well? Because it really, it, it changes both of the dynamics for teachers. Um, and par educators was a huge thing, um, just, not just for student acquisition and special education needs to promote all access, but just substitutes. I mean, that, just at a core logistical level, finding Spanish substitutes who are comfortable teaching in Spanish is really hard. And both districts said, oh, our subs, I mean, our par educators are by far, like, we couldn't run the school without bilingual par educators. It's part of the program, which was, I hadn't thought about the sub-issue before. Um, so here's where I try to lay out, um, sorry, this is where it gets more wordy, uh, my evolving thinking about things. Um, so my prior thinking was unclear neighborhood-only, hybrid, so my current thinking on it is that a hybrid system be preferable. Uh, perhaps students that reg- registered at Fort River by June first would receive preference, um, or slots, I should say. Probably should have changed the wording of that. Uh, we, the last five years have never had forty students registered by June first. So, I mean, it does allow for people who are registering to have priority at Fort River, does a disadvantage on that community. Like, right now, we have twenty-eight. Um, but that remaining students could be filled by lottery, right? Um, I, I also think, um, space needs at Cocker Farm, as you heard earlier, need to be resolved. And if there was some students from Cocker Farm who were able to come to this program, not to exclude Wildwood, but particularly, it would relieve a lot of the tensions around preschool and make, you know, we kind of half-jokingly talked about universal, was mentioned, universal preschool. But separate from the finances of it, the space of it is, is a real concern. Um, so there's some real benefits there. I also think, uh, what I heard from Princeton, which was helpful, is that if you're going to do this, just know that in their community, and in our community, except I looked at the data. There are some families, uh, who register later, uh, for a whole host of reasons, but not because they've moved in. So reserving some slots for Fort River families, particularly Latino Fort River families, who don't register necessarily by June first, was something that we should be considering. Um, we have some evidence, no matter, you know, we've tried different outreach mechanisms, that some families are gonna register earlier than others. Some families, um, have more transient, or more, live more transiently lives for a whole host of reasons. Um, so just, not just doing the June first thing, but actually just saying, June first plus, let's leave a couple of spots open, which was helpful to hear from Princeton. So, bless you. Um, some policy implications and change in my thinking are involving thinking about lottery systems. So I think I mentioned last time, uh, this is actually the first slide, socioeconomic balance, preschool access, maintaining a classes per grade level, which is more fiscal and linguistic-cultural background. Um, so the shift here is that preschool access still, right, I just talked about Cocker Farm, maintaining a classes per grade level, I think that's a fiscal reality. Linguistic-cultural background, I continue to hear from every place I go, that having Spanish language models is essential to the benefit of the program. So having that be, um, I think in my mind, that has ink, like, in terms of a waiting system, I don't have numbers to it, but theoretical waiting system. That has gone up, uh, in my estimation, based on what I hear from other districts. And then transportation is this big one, right? How do we do transportation if we're gonna have a lottery system? So I worked with our transportation department, and East Hadley Road has, um, I think it's been discussed ad nauseam for the last couple of years, for good reason. Um, students who are living in apartment complexes in East Hadley Road attend all three of our schools. Um, so we have buses that literally go, you know, Fort River buses that drive past students who are waiting for their bus for Wildwood or for Cocker Farm. And we feel like we can fit significantly more students on those buses, because they're, the bus routes are strained. Just frankly, they're, they're odd, because they're going, they're crossing town in, in unusual ways, and we can't really pick up other kids on those routes. Um, so we, uh, we feel confident, my transportation. So we feel confident, my transportation department feels confident that we could bus students living on East Hadley Road to Fort River in a scenario without incurring additional costs. If we were to increase, if we were to provide transportation for all students in a lottery, that's going to be a significant cost increase. Obviously needs a lot more further discussion and development, but what makes me feel sort of okay, even putting that as a slide, is East Hadley Road we know is significant amount of low income families, low income families in our community have on average more transportation challenges than families who have more means. So it might be in terms of a social justice approach to provide transportation for some and not others, maybe that won't fly and maybe it's a bad idea. But I did, I was most concerned about families who are more likely to have transportation challenges as opposed to all families at the moment. I think why I took, one of the reasons I took the socioeconomic balance off is that it felt really strange because in some ways, given Fort River's balance, we'd be like advantaging families of means, which doesn't feel consistent with our mission. It also is the case that everywhere I speak to, the percentage of students receiving free juice lunch goes down when they integrate a dual language program. So there's enough evidence that this may happen naturally without anyone, you know, creating a lottery aspect to it, that I think we would let, my opinion is, we could let that play out a little bit and see how the trends go. So we had a session on April 4th, you can see me and Phyllis and myself there. We had two sessions actually, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. I was happy that we were well-intended, I think I mentioned to Mr. Tonas earlier today that we asked people for feedback and many, many people got feedback, or I mentioned earlier today, tonight, that from our Facebook page, because we did some outreach via Facebook. And we had a really good turnout, I'd say, I think it was 24 families total. 26, excuse me, there we go. And so it was a five-point scale about the level of interest, the average was four and two-thirds, so pretty high level of interest. And questions, most of the questions were about, could it be implemented next year? So we had a number of families with students entering kindergarten next year. Phyllis was really helpful in answering that, the same way she answered it here at the school committee. How the lottery would work was a major topic of conversation. One I hadn't thought of was about older students, right? So if a family, this came up a couple of times, so if a family has an older student now at Wildwood, the younger student got in the lottery and attends Fort River, does the older student stay at Wildwood? Really good question, had not considered and something that I think we need to consider as we go forward with this. And the enthusiasm was multiple parents said, could my child redo kindergarten in 2019 if they're entering this year to be part of the program? Because it's such a different program and I was not expecting that feedback, but I think it shows the level of enthusiasm and engagement that at least the people who came to the meeting, which is a self-selecting group, had about it. But really good dialogue, really helpful feedback, I mean, I just had themes, but really helpful to have Phyllis Harding there to answer questions and talk about her experiences in other districts as well, as well as her parent experience, she talked about her own children. So that afternoon, in between those two meetings, sandwiched, we met, Phyllis and I met with the Fort River staff and teachers and par educators. So we had 25 responses, we did a similar kind of survey and the average is 4.0, so not quite as high as parents, but still four out of five was, I think, pretty high. And most of the questions focused on implementation challenges and not losing some of the work like co-teaching, trauma-informed school, because the passion that the staff feels for the current work that Ms. Chamberlain and the district are leading there. And so that was a good discussion and I think Ms. Hardy was really helpful in describing again, other experience in other districts, that this isn't the only thing that happens. It's not like you become a dual language school at the expense of all the other things that we believe are important for our staff and our students. There was a number of questions about, which I think is predictable and very realistic from staff, about like the specifics of how it would work. And so we talked a lot about, it's, this is going to develop over time, we want your feedback now and we're going to come back and get feedback in an iterative manner. And I think that helped many of the teachers feel relaxed that this wasn't their one shot to get involved. But again, we're trying to norm how change processes work and I think that takes time. But again, four out of five, I was really pleased with. So next steps, so we have a Spanish language, similar event to the parent event, but, and we did have bilingual parents at the event on the 4th, but tomorrow's event is only in Spanish. So I will be doing, playing a very low speaking role, as you can imagine, mostly a listening role. But Dr. Guevara and Mavi Reyes, who's a teacher, who's taught bilingually both in Puerto Rico and the United States and is a member of our staff and kind of interested in this program, are going to be the primary facilitators of that. On further discussions, exploration of possible enrollment models, I'll get to that with a handout in a minute. About the staffing needed. Interestingly, we met with CPAC yesterday around the non-dual language parts of the, my responsive enrollment working group and great conversation with the president of CPAC, Ms. Chamberlain, Dr. Brady. And what came out of that meeting was a proposal for CPAC and Student Service Offices to lead a special education specialized program working group, which I'll describe a little more in a second. And that we have to identify states and stakeholders for La Cienabra, which is, I think, feels hard to describe as a two-day retreat. We kind of work out some of those curriculum logistical issues. Is it okay if I transition off slides to this or do we want to pause? Maybe pausing would be good.
Why don't we pause? Yeah, let's see if anyone has any comments or questions, Mr. Demling?
So again, you're doing nothing to dampen my enthusiasm on this. I appreciate the continued presentations on this. I mean, there's so much good stuff in here, I won't go over all of it. There was that one line about elevating Latino culture and how this is about social, it just, it just makes your heart swell and just so excited to do this. So a couple of quick meta points and then kind of a big question. So I want to make sure that this possibility of Crocker and Wildwood doing their own themes doesn't fall off the radar. I know it has nothing to do with dual language, but it's been brought up in this context before and just sort of where that. At this point, now that the enrollment working groups are done, it's sort of maybe on its own track, but just agenda-wise, you know, that's something of interest going forward. I appreciate this very detailed timeline, I think for communications purposes, you're going to need something that's a lot clearer and smaller and more condensed in terms of where we're at, where the points are for input and what the no-go decision process is. Because I do think, like, even with all this unriddled enthusiasm, we have to still make it clear that this isn't a fait accompli and we're doing our due diligence and, you know, we hope it all happens, you know, but we do have to make a good decision. So my big question is really, how can we make this bigger, right? How do we expand it as much as we can responsibly expand it? Because, you know, I do, on the one hand, really hear what the MABE director was saying about, you know, you want to, even with all the enthusiasm, excitement, you want to make sure that you're doing responsible implementation and one grade at a time. And I understand those constraints, it's just that every person I talk to about this, it's, I'm constantly amazed at what universal excitement it has. And it really hits so many marks in our community, not just the social justice, but the, you know, the research-based improvements in the achievement gap for ELL and all that. So I'm trying to think of how you would go about that. And the sort of one idea I have is that, you know, if it has to be two classes at a time because of the way that model works, if you did four classes, then, and you had four classes at Fort River, then Fort River becomes what I think maybe was spoken of at one point as like an in-district magnet school. And the advantages I see from that are multifold, I do think there's problems. But to go to like half of our classes be in this model, I think would really be such a commitment. And to have the whole school be like all bought into it, I think would be pretty amazing. You know, we do have quite a number of ELL students in our community. So, you know, one concern about doing it much smaller is developing kind of like a have and have not situation of who was lucky enough to get in. Another thing that sort of concerns me about a zone-based hybrid lottery is that it's a bit of real estate advantaging. That's not a word, advantaging. You get, you had an advantage if you're in that particular real estate zone, right? And so it not being available to everyone. I also think that when we look at our enrollment zones, managing two going forward, I think is a lot simpler. And I totally hear the concerns about not wanting to redistrict constantly. I've been through that with my kids and I understand the pain of that. That being said, I think it's quite possible that even outside of this, there are things in the future that might cause us to reconsider our three enrollment zones with those islands that, you know, present their own challenges. So, you know, that's another way, advantage there. And the other thing, you know, we've talked about this as possibly something combating the lost charter schools. It's, I think it's harder to move the needle on that numbers-wise when it's a quarter of our students. But when it's half of our students, then I think that really, that becomes a bigger draw. There's some other things, but, you know, I'll go on. Two of the problems you have already mentioned through here, you know, one, the transportation. I think when you open it up to in-district, well, what does that mean? If you, if anybody across town could potentially go there, that's its own challenge and I don't pretend to have a good answer to that. And the staffing, I think, is a huge thing, you know, you've mentioned that before, but how important that staffing is. It's not just staffing the four classrooms, it's staffing four classrooms every year as the program grows. And so you have an entire school to fill and so that's its own challenge. So it may be that we get to the end of this and it's not possible. I just feel like from school committee members, I'm engaging with people in the community about this, I want to be able to say, every stone was overturned. You know, we exhausted every possibility and we couldn't make this any bigger. You know, I think that's, if there's one thing I'm constantly hearing about this is, awesome, can it be bigger? So that's just my idea.
Yeah, so what I want to bring up is probably irrelevant to, Mr. Demling brought up in terms of what, if you had answers or perspective on it. And I'd point out an irony in Mr. Demling's comments is that he started off by saying, this isn't a fait accompli and a done deal. He then pivoted to, can you expand to the most aggressive possible?
I'm a bundle of contradictions.
No, I don't mean that as a criticism actually, because actually what I was going to say is, my, everything I hear from people and everything we've talked about honestly suggests that we really want to do this and we want to find an answer that's yes and that it's not. And I'm saying this because I want to be, I think, I want to be fair to what I think we're doing and fair to what I think the public, the public would engage us on this. That if anyone's listening to this or watching it and saying, you know, well, you say it's not a done deal, you're going to do this. But yet all of the energy and all the planning says, we really want to. And up until this point, leaving the absence that three of my colleagues haven't spoken yet this evening anyways, that all the energy from the committee up until this point has been about how they'd like to see it happen. The public's excited, you've expressed excitement. And so I kind of want to recast the question a little bit that Mr. Demling asked earlier. Is that to me, I think what I would love to know, and I don't really see it on here, so I don't really see it in slides, is what are the challenges or the gating items that we need to get through to be able to make a decision to do this? And then if we do this and we can get through those gates, how do we then further refine some of the questions that are being raised? That could be anything from, you know, how we zone it or do lotteries or whatever, to in fact, Mr. Demling's question, which I think is actually, I think it's an admirable thing for the committee, because I think we are voicing something from the community. If we advocate for the idea that if we're advocating for make it larger and then you press back and say, yeah, 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 but remember the MABE presentation that says, being structural and sort of developmental with the program means, even though it takes longer to do, you know, 10 years in, you're actually much more successful than if you rush to expand now. I think that's a nice tension to have. I mean, sincerely, it's a healthy tension to have back and forth. But going back to it again, I just don't see anything in our conversation, which is honestly, if we were speaking honestly to the public, I don't see anything in our conversation that says, we don't want to find a way to do this. And so I think if we're being honest with ourselves, that we do want to find a way to do this, then it becomes really important to define what things we might discover or learn or be gating items that would tell us, hey, it turns out, even though we'd like to do this, there is X or Y reason why we're not going to be doing it well if we do it and we need to resolve, you know what I'm saying? So anyways, I just raised that out there as a question.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so.
That's a lot that's been thrown at you.
No, it's not. All good stuff. So in terms of Crocker Farm and Wildwood, actually I've engaged Dr. Kristen Rodriguez, who facilitated the enrollment working group to meet with, virtually meet with myself and the principals, I think it's actually next Wednesday. Next Wednesday or the Wednesday after that, to help us think through, how would we engage a process around developing further identity? How do we engage the community in that work? So I think more soon on that, probably next month, I'll be able to share more information. But she did, in my opinion and many others, such a wonderful job walking into a pretty tension-filled, I mean, members in the enrollment work group are here. And I'm not saying anything, saying it plainly, because it was, I don't think anyone would deny that it was a tension-filled space right after a building project did not pass and got a group of people who, I think many of us were still living a little bit in that and got us moving to future thinking in some really powerful ways. So we're going to access her to be helping us think about this a little bit, starting, I think, I believe it is next Wednesday. So that is not a forgotten point at all. In terms of how do we, you know, the make it bigger magnet school, I actually, can I connect that to the challenges even of what we're talking about?
I was trying to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I just want to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. So I think, you know, because we have MABE support, I think we're in really good shape in terms of professional development and those pieces. I think the three things that come to mind in terms of challenges, one is staffing, making sure we have the appropriate staffing. And when I think about starting with two kindergartens instead of one, two, you know, four, however you're going to, you know what I mean? So there's a staffing challenge, because I don't know quite how we do that at the current time and I don't know how I fund additional positions in the budget climate we're in to do it. But there's also, so that's a set of challenges, right? There's also a set of financial challenges and sort of I talked about that a little bit in this document. But while we're trying to make this as cost neutral as we possible, it's not a zero cost, right? There's materials that need to be bought, there's professional development. And so what are the impacts of doubling that or separate from that, what are the impacts of not doubling it and just doing it one time over? Is something that we have to think, because you can't just think about it one year. You may buy, purchase one year, but it's a multi-year commitment around staffing, it's a multi-year commitment around curriculum materials. And I think the last one is making some challenging decisions that I sort of referenced earlier about Princeton, about who's teaching what and having a long-range vision of, is math always going to be in Spanish? Is math, is it going to alternate every year? And everyone I speak to, including Phyllis, continues to say, having a long-range plan for that at the beginning is incredibly important. Not doing every year, oh, what are we going to do in first grade, right? Really thinking through that and that's why the La Cienabra is particularly important, because you're doing some of the nuts and bolts logistic, but you're also doing some long-range vision and planning so that you can think six, seven years down the line. And obviously you're going to make adjustments and do program evaluation along the way. So I think that, those are some of the things that really need to play out before even someone like myself, who as you noted, is quite enthusiastic and say, yeah, we can do this for fall of 2019. I'm not at a place, I'm not at 100%, yeah, we're there. I'm at 100% place of, yeah, we should explore this and I think we have some pieces in place that can make it work. But the staffing, the finances and making clear curriculum choices, those are still, you know, challenges, gating items for me that we won't have more clarity on until the fall, until we go through that process. And I think this spring, we're going to continue to engage the Fort River faculty, engage the community. We're trying to figure out different ways to do that. We won't have that much new information, but how do we, how do we approach that? But I think come fall, after we've done much more intensive professional development, both on the curricular side, which is not La Cienabra, but also La Cienabra, we were talking about Amber-specific kind of things. I think those are, they're significant sized obstacles that I think we can overcome, but I don't have answers to some key questions right now, nor should I, right? I'm not saying I want to have like, oh, I got this draft in my back pocket. But that really needs to be developed in a collaborative manner with the staff, we're going to be directly involved in the program and certainly from the lottery perspective, the larger community, as well as you all. I mean, in terms of a policy level, the, how the enrollment works is a huge issue. That I'm throwing ideas in my evolving thinking, but at the end of the day, that's something that's clearly on the policy side and not on the administrative side. Sorry, that was a long-winded answer, hope that helps.
So actually, that was my comment, sort of kind of building on what you had said before. In the enthusiasm that we're all hearing, I think, in the community about this and one of the, there's an undercurrent of potential, it could swing very quickly to negative. quickly to negative. Because of this, the idea that it's, it's so small and it's in one school. Because I've already heard from some well-meaning parents, like, oh gosh, we're getting screwed again. And, and, and so I think, you know, while setting the gating items right now for how we're going to get to 2019, fall of 2019 is helpful. And when we get to that point, I think it will also be helpful to map out, what are some possible gating items and decision points that we might be looking to, to expand further, once we've gotten sort of, you know, the pilot years under our belts? Because I think that will also help people to understand that it isn't just a one and done thing and to see that, like, we're, we're, we're hearing the, this broad interest and how might we get to a place where it is more universal? And then at the same time, happy to hear about the, the focus for the Crocker Farm and, and Wildwood communities and how we might have themes for those schools. And I think communicating that in tandem with the progress on this will really help quell some of that, or at least help people, people feel comfortable that it's not just one school.
I was going to second some of what Allison just shared, because when I was listening, as a Wildwood parent, I'm listening and I'm thinking, well, Crocker Farm, from what you just said, it's like, well, Crocker Farm, we'd like to draw some students from because it's overcrowded. And we'd like to draw some students from the East Toddler Road community because we have free transportation. But I wasn't hearing any conversation about how potential Wildwood students would potentially benefit from this. And I'm not saying that's, I'm just saying that as a Wildwood parent, I think a lot of people might listen to the comments you just said in that way. So, and, you know, I understand it should be located in my school and, and I can, so I, there are lots of reasons to do exactly what you're saying, but I think the communication of those reasons is going to be key. And so when I was going over some of the activities, I just wanted to clarify, so the, the supporting of a formation of a working group to further study specialized program models, that's talking specifically about special ed program models? So I'm wondering if there's going to be any additional task force or formation of parents in a way to provide feedback? Because it seems to me that we do have a long timeframe and these information sessions are great, but the enrollment working group really did work well. And I don't know if there's, it's just an idea, but is, is there space to potentially get a group of parents who could be involved more long-term and help kind of flag when we might be coming into Roblox? Because I still remember you mentioning that there's districts that have had this idea and are still not making any progress because they can't agree on where to locate the program. So it seems to me like that is one of the biggest, like, where we decide to locate the program and how we decide to enroll students in the program are going to be the biggest issues. And if we can do the work to get community members really engaged in that conversation as early as possible, it may help prevent us from being here five years down the road and not having a program at all. Because I think that would be the absolute worst outcome.
Yeah. So. That's really helpful feedback, I agree.
And I'll just add my comments. I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I think the other thing that I would add is, you know, it's actually in the form of a question, so something that you had mentioned before about the, the teachers, following that staff meeting that you had at Fort River, you expressed that there was a level of interest expressed, an average of four out of five. I actually would like to know what, you know, without any identifiers, what the, the comments were detracting from that, right? Because I would imagine, you know, when you say average, there's got to be somebody down the bottom end of that, of that scale. And I think that that can actually provide some valuable information to all of us, right? And just understanding where the concerns might be. Because I think that, you know, in addition to the concerns that might come from parents in the community about a program not speaking to them or addressing the community, that we could also potentially see problems coming from staff, right? Who are concerned that a decision like this, even no matter how careful we are in its implementation and carrying out the process, that we are somehow being short-sighted or that we are, you know, short-changing other curriculum decisions, right? And so what I would want to really understand is, you know, explore what those concerns might be, kind of put them out on the table, right? And have, you know, a frank conversation around what that is. And then if there are trade-offs, you know, let's, let's acknowledge that, right? And let's say, these are the trade-offs that we, you know, that we see potentially happening. And if there are no trade-offs, if it's just one, you know, decision over another, I think it's valuable to have that kind of a conversation as well. But, you know, at some point, I do think it's beneficial to highlight, you know, and I think you've been doing that to a certain extent, but to highlight some of the, the challenges that we're going to have to overcome together. Because in order for this program to be successful, there are so many big program changes that people will have to accept, that they have to go into it eyes wide open, right? If they are, if there's any feeling that decisions have been made blindly or too quickly or that, you know, that these trade-offs were made, that that potentially could, you know, sort of destroy the whole thing, right? So, yeah, I think that, you know, just given the conversation tenure that we've had so far, it would be really helpful to, to move in that direction at some point, too.
Yeah, I want to build off of what Ms. Donahue just said, that, and this is sort of reflecting on what my colleagues have been saying. And then, I don't know if this is helpful, but in our language around this, up into this point, we've talked about exploring the concept and then figuring out whether we're going to do it. And I think unintentionally, it creates sort of a go-no-go sort of perspective on, are we going to choose to do this or not? And I guess in this context, I'm not sure that's a helpful way to talk about this. I mean, I think actually migrating, if you're going to find the appropriate language to do this, to the fact that we, there's actually been a great deal of enthusiasm expressed. However, as was, as just been laid out by all my colleagues and by yourself earlier, there are a number of elements that are very significant about how one would successfully implement this, that need to be explored in detail, and these would be done collaboratively. There's also, is in fact, I think, the challenge, that as you said, and as Mabe said, you need to know not only where you are in year one, but also where you're going in year five and year 10. And part of that very clearly, is very clearly linked to expanding, a vision for expanding the program. So not even just how do you get through grades, you know, kindergarten through grade six, but also very intentionally, what would it mean to also not only grow that model, but then expand it, right? And, and in some ways, as, as you, you're all, colleagues are all saying, if we can't answer that question at the beginning, in terms of what our planning process is, to have a vision for expanding it, we may lose people at the beginning, right? So it may, maybe, that may itself become a functional implementation challenge, that people do not see the clear pathway for expansion. And so I'm saying this only because I think it's going to be more helpful to the public if we're expressing the enthusiasm of doing this, we're also trying to be very honest and very forthright about what different kinds of gating items or issues are being explored to both launching this thing immediately, and then also to having a vision about expanding it within Fort River, and then beyond that. And I think framing it that way is probably going to be a really constructive one publicly, but also internally for staff and for our own planning when we're looking at budgeting. The only other thing I'd say, because I, I brought it up a lot at the previous meeting we had on this subject, I couldn't agree more with the point that you should almost never talk about the dual language program without also talking about what's going on at Crocker or Wildwood. Because anytime you do that, you're creating that sort of have and have-nots challenge that's just not constructive, it's not even what you're doing. So I would build into your presentations in the future, always have some kind of update about that process too, just so that you can show people there's progress. And it challenges you to make sure there, I'm not saying not, it challenges you to make sure there is progress. If you're thinking, oh, I gotta update my slide, wait, I haven't done anything in a month. Hey, we gotta do something. You know, it's, it's a healthy thing, healthy pressure.
Any other comments or thoughts before we move on?
I just want to quickly thank Mr. Nakajima for introducing the term gating items into my vernacular.
You're welcome.
So, Dr. Morris. So it's a question I don't want necessarily to belabor the conversation about, but something I'm struggling with, and Ms. Spitzer brought it up, is just around the, I'm struggling, who the right group? And again, I'm not looking for an immediate response, this is something I'd love feedback, you know, over time. Because I agree that this lottery thing is kind of like, could be a powder keg for people for all sorts of reasons, some of which Mr. Nakajima just mentioned, but actually some of which just because I've lived through redistricting, I've lived through other proposals and enrollment changes are, bring out strong emotions in everybody. And that's true in every community. It's not, that's not a unique to Amherst thing, everybody, you know, not, having nothing to do with a language. You can go a lot of communities where they end up in court over it, right? So if you go to North Carolina, you'll see a lot of court cases about who goes to which school, right? And how does that change over time? And so I guess what I need, I would appreciate some help thinking about is who the right group of people is, right? So if it's, how can people be neutral and not self-interested? Or maybe do we want self-interested people in, in the group? And I don't mean self-interested in a bad way, I mean, like, I'm going to join the group because I live here and I feel really passionately, like, that's a totally reasonable, logical thing. So I, there's no negative value of, that I'm subscribing, placing on that. But who is that group to help think about that? So just, if you have thoughts on that, you just shoot me an email or, you know, give me a call, because it's something that I, more than some of the other things on here, frankly, it's something I need the most help thinking about, just being very candid here. And it's also the place, frankly, that is going to be the most policy-directed thing for you all. I mean, some of the other academic curriculum things, you know, we may have discussions, you may not agree, but like, I feel like I'm well, kind of well-positioned with resources in terms of Mabe and others to be working on that. I think the policy implications of enrollment zoning is frankly going to come to you all. So I can make recommendations, but that one, that one's clearly in a policy, you know, would be involving policy pieces. So, you know, what's my role, what's, what's the committee's role, what's the community's role, how do those interleave is something that I'd appreciate helping.
So is that something that we could potentially just send, as you mentioned before, just some thoughts and, okay?
Yeah, I would very much appreciate, or just give me a call.
Okay.
Hop in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving us on to the regionalization board update.
Our 7:35 edit?
Our 7:35 edit. We're a little, a little behind, just a couple minutes, yeah. This is, yeah. Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so actually I'll turn to Mr. Demling for this topic.
Sure, sure, okay. So speaking of the powder keg of enrollment, where people go to school, yeah, so, regionalization, school district planning board. So just a little recap for new members, is we are exploring the possibility of reutilizing from the pre-K to sixth level. We formed the regional school district, district planning committee in Amherst, which is myself, Joan Temkin and Mary Lou Tylen. Joan Temkin is a former Pelham School Committee and now an Amherst resident, and Mary Lou Tylen, longtime chair of the finance, actually also former, former school committee, so excellent experience there. And so the purpose of that board was to, this committee was to decide whether to form a district planning board with another town, which we did with Pelham's Planning Committee, which consists of Emily Marriott, who's on the regional school committee, Cara Castenson, who's the chair of the Pelham School Committee, and Tom Fanning, who is a, I think he's former school committee, I think he's former middle school teacher, Mr. Morris is nodding, an all-around nice guy. So, so we've met twice now and, and we're exploring that. So I bring it up here to bring the committee up to speed, but we've had two meetings, we've had general discussions about strengths and challenges, what each town brings to the table. We've, we've sort of informally all kind of agreed philosophically that what we're looking for is trying to determine, is there a win-win? Is there a situation, a format of a regional school district that is both advantageous to Amherst and to Pelham? So we've talked about some of the different issues there. And so our, our most immediate pragmatic task is to select a consultant. So we're looking at the possibility of doing an RFP, we're also looking at the possibility of using an intergovernmental agency, there's a, it's called the Collins Center. So the Donahue is just another example of this, but the Collins Center is, is a, out of UMass in Boston, yes. And they were the, they've done a number of regionalization engagements with towns across the state, so they'll be coming and talking to us. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot to go into, so we're going to all the details. I bring it up here though, because, you know, when you play it all the way forward, if the, if our board recommends regionalization, what that would mean is the dissolving of this committee, as well as the dissolving of the Pelham School. I don't mean to be, you know, stark about it, but it, it is, it's an existential question for our committee. And then, so we're looking at questions of, okay, well, what would that new school committee look like? How many people would there be on it? What would the financial arrangement be between the towns? What would the building future be with, with Pelham Elementary and such? So I was going to ask the chair, and now that we do have a chair, I can ask, if we could keep it called out as a specific update at every agenda item, just because as we ramp up, I hope to have more updates, but even if there comes a month to pass where there isn't much to say, I think one of the, the main things that our board is trying to focus on is keeping the community engaged and aware as much as possible. One of the challenges, we met this morning, that we talked about from the Amherst perspective, is that there's a lot politically going on in Amherst right now. We're transitioning our, our government, and even in the schools, we have quite a number of big-time initiatives that are all competing for people's attention, and we don't want anyone in the public to feel like this all happened, you know, out of, out of attention sight. So just want to make it as visible and upfront as possible.
I mean, I think that that makes a lot of sense, given both the importance of the topic and the fact that, you know, the agendas typically serve as sort of the first notification point, you know, for a lot of people. So, you know, but I think if that makes sense to the committee, I mean, it means, you know, giving up extra space on the, the agenda on a regular basis. We have another issue that came up, what we were talking about, which we'll mention later during our school committee planning section. But there, you know, there's probably going to be at least two items that we may consider on a regular basis. But if that makes sense to the committee, I think, I think that makes sense to me. Yeah, people are nodding. Mr. Demling.
So the other thing I, I just wanted to add, just kind of an FYI heads up, is that the general kind of timeframe, this all, this depends on when we get a consultant onboard and how quickly we're able to engage the community, is, is to try and do the bulk of the study and engagement this calendar year, and then to come up with a recommendation. But I think the, the very earliest, that, you know, if regionalization was recommended, that this would be implemented for the schools would be fall 2020? Is that the, Dr. Morris is nodding again? Okay.
That's the earliest I could imagine.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that, that's the absolute earliest. And, and I do think that there will come a point where, and this, it may be brief, but it will be intense, where the board will want engagement from the school committees, right? So I can certainly, I would anticipate the board coming and presenting, and maybe we even have a joint meeting. But it, you know, it's going to be a lot of what do we want the future of this committee to be, and we'll be sort of deciding our own fate, as it were. So, you know, there will, there'll be a time when it will be the top-level item on our attentions.
And just one quick question for you, Mr. Demling. I mean, you know, when I hear mention of consultant, obviously then there could be potentially costs associated with that. Is there a budget associated with this?
Yeah, so we were fortunate enough to receive a regionalization and efficiency grants from the state, $21,500 granted to, to do this evaluation. So that's, that, that's nice. So in this, in this budget-conscious climate, it's not going to, you know, cost us that, so that, that is good.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments, thoughts, questions about that? Okay. So moving on to the retail marijuana discussion.
So this was a topic that was discussed at the regional level, as I wanted to raise it at the elementary level, there's different implications perhaps, in terms of school distance, you know, probably less so, is my opinion, just based on that the three elementary schools in Amherst are less far away from, or further away from downtown than the high school is, or the middle school for that matter. But I just wanted to raise it to see if there was any, I didn't have a, I don't have a spiel. It's more just, is this something that Amherst School Committee wants to discuss or take a position on, or is this something that is going to be best left to the regional schools? So that's, that's it.
Any thoughts from the committee? Mr. Demling?
So I looked at the, at the maps, that, where the, the buffer zone would be with the proposed zoning change at this false, the springtime, springtime meeting, specific to elementary schools. It didn't seem like it, like you said, you know, there's, it's, it's not nearly as close to retail, but the only kind of section it seemed to maybe impact was Fort River at the, at the intersection of, I'm not going to remember the streets, but you know, the intersection.
College and Southeastern.
Thank you. So, but yeah, but, but given that we don't have, it's not like elementary school kids are independently walking out after school and frequenting the intersections, hopefully, in, in a similar way that we have middle school and high school kids going downtown. So I didn't, I didn't have a huge. so, um, I didn't, I didn't have a huge desire for, you know, to speak to it from the, from this committee's perspective.
And I, I totally agree that from a access to retail establishments is less of an issue for the elementary students, though, one, one thing I, I do notice, though, is the impact that having retail establishments will have on the overall community and, and sort of cultural conversations in town. My younger son is in fifth grade, and they're already talking about weed, and they know nothing about it. So, um, I, I think that that, it, you know, while their access to purchasing and, and that is, is not going to be impacted by this, but I think just sort of their world perception is definitely going to be impacted, and, and those conversations aren't happening right now in, in the elementary school level, so it's just something, it's a concern.
And the other thing that came up when you raised it earlier was the idea of having some of the revenue, um, from the taxation go towards the schools, and I don't know if that's a, we had a conversation at the regional level, I'd like to say I'd support that also, some of that money going to the elementary schools for the reason that Allison just pointed out, I mean, it, I'm not an expert on this, but, um, I assume that earlier you started the conversation about, um, substances like marijuana, the better.
Dr. Morris and Mr. Nakajima?
So just very briefly, we do do, um, education around substance abuse at the upper elementary level. Yep, that's part of the health curriculum at, at certainly fifth and sixth grade.
So would we want to take a motion similar to the one regarding taxation at the elementary school level, or is it, did the vote we took on regarding taxation, um, cover us as well?
I mean, yeah.
I don't know if that's a question for me or you.
Yeah, I think it's just a question, right?
Just, uh, putting it out there.
Yeah.
I guess that's separate from the, no, it's the same, because the tax dollars are being generated through retail marijuana establishments. So I would just like to say I'd support that similar stance from the school.
I mean, I think that's a good enough question probably to pose to our town government officials, um, you know, our town manager, and, um, possibly look to see if there's anything at this point, sort of statewide, right, about, you know, whether there has to be, um, a discussion at a regional, you know, upper, uh, secondary level and an elementary level as well. Because I think that, you know, for the reasons already stated, it absolutely makes sense to, to ensure that if there's going to be any revenue generated, that that's brought through to all the different levels, right? Because education does not just happen in a vacuum when kids happen to turn thirteen or, you know, fifteen or whatever, um, so you definitely want to make sure that you're accounting for all the younger kids. Um, so maybe that's a question that we could follow up with, you know, town leaders, Mr. Nakajima?
I'd like to see it on the agenda. I think we should do it, I don't see any reason not to do it, and we actually had a robust argument at the regional level, in which people were saying explicitly why they thought we shouldn't, and the vote carried that we should, I think we should here, too, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, I think it's an important guidance to give to the town that we consider it important. And frankly, since it doesn't determine anything, it's really just an official vote to request something, then at the very least it should trigger a conversation. Two years ago, when the recreational marijuana vote happened, I was frankly freaked out when I met with people from the town health department, and, is working group of folks, and I don't mean any criticism to them, I'm doing this publicly, so I don't mean to be criticizing anyone, um, but I, but what I found was, and this is kind of an interesting counterpoint, because in a previous conversation, my general demeanor seemed to be very laissez-faire around the retail of marijuana, but, but if people recall a different conversation, we've gone into questions of wellness and helping people think through, be educated and supported and counsel decisions around, good decision-making around marijuana and other substances, I'm actually really aggressively in favor of doing that, I think we should be doing more of that on everything, not just on marijuana, but generally. And, um, and I was really bothered that there appeared to still be a bifurcated conversation in our society, where some people who are otherwise really engaged on wellness, in my personal opinion, have their head in the sand on the issue of legalization of marijuana, and the idea that this is, this is something which is happening already, and if families go traveling, they're going to go to other states where it's already a reality, it's already nationally a conversations reality. Former Speaker of the House Representative, a Republican, has officially come out in favor of recreational legalization, which means we need to be adopting, we need to be looking for and either developing or adopting, um, curriculum, training, and counseling methods that accept the reality of, of marijuana, uh, as well as other substances, and really help families and kids cope and figure out how to, I mean, how, I mean, yes, it's illegal to their majority, I get that, but there's, but it's still something that's floating around our environment, and, you know, and we have to help, we have to improve how we help, um, families and kids deal with this, and we should be, and the staff, too, because we're going to have staff that even if it's illegal for them to do it, it's going to be an environment legally for them, too. And I, and I was, the point I'm getting at about the previous conversation with, um, town health officials generally in our area, was that I was surprised that because at that point it was an open question as to whether it was going to be legal, there was a real head in the sand around thinking about, how do we migrate to a world in which this is going to be a part of it, and we still desperately need to help families and kids make good decisions and better decisions of what they're doing, and be canceled and supported in those decisions. Um, so I, yes, on the motion, but two, I think our district and our town should try to be leaders on this.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, that's really well said, um, I'm, I'm glad you said it tonight, because I think it's, it's perfect in terms of the tone that I think the school committee, so we're obviously K to six, but we, we are the representatives of the region at Amherst Town Meeting, where the zoning article is going to come up, talking about around the high school, and so that, that, the fact that you can be, um, pro-decriminalization and pro-wellness at the same time, I think is very important, Mr. Nakajima expressed it very eloquently. Um, the other technical point, Dr. Morris is, um, you know, uh, I don't think there's great awareness that, um, uh, it's still illegal, possession will still be legal on school grounds for both parents and staff, and so we really want to avoid accidental breaches of that law, I think, um, and so there, there might be a little bit of education, I don't know exactly what form that ought to take, but in terms of, you know, whether we work with the town, whether that's a staff training issue, just in terms of, you know, people need to know that, you know, even if it's okay with you and, and your vehicle, that not, not as you walk in to pick up your kids or come to a school event, or, there has to be separation. It's helpful point, thank you.
Great, okay, so it sounds like, uh, there's support from the committee to bring this back formally, does that make sense? Okay, so we'll, we'll do that. Okay, um, anything else you want to add?
This conversation?
Okay, so we'll move on to accept gifts, do we have, we have gifts? Yeah. Um, so we need a motion, Mr. Nakajima.
I move.
We're enthusiastically raising your hand.
Due to the hour. And also, good modeling, entire point is, this is supposed to be something which is extraordinarily rapid.
There you go.
I move, uh, that the school committee, uh, accept the following donations as enumerated, uh, from Amherst Educational Foundation Incorporated, check number fifteen thirty-two, final AEF Excellence Grant Payment for Fractions Facilitations Course Elementary in the amount of three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, Amherst Educational Foundation Incorporated, check number fifteen thirty-two, final AEF Excellence Grant Payment, Excellence Grant Payment Undoing Racism in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars, for a total gift of seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Great, it's been moved, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, all those in favor? Excellent, unanimous. Thank you very much to the Amherst Education Foundation, um, as usual, for generosity and support of our schools. Okay, um, so last item on the agenda, well, second to last anyways, school committee planning, um, so we've got a list so far, um, on here, uh, the superintendent evaluation process, did you want to say something?
I just, I kept a running list throughout the meeting of.
Okay.
Future ones, do you want me?
Um, I did, too, so, yep.
Your list is better than mine.
Why don't you fill them in if I, if I miss anything?
Sure.
Um, so we've got the superintendent evaluation process, um, and then multiple policies, uh, fiscal management, student activities funds, uh, the overdue food service balance policy, so those are edits to the current collections policy, um, and then policies JICFC, GBAA, and JICK, uh, which have been edited, and can you remind us what those policies cover? Because I certainly don't remember.
Yeah, they're generally policies on non-discrimination, so last summer, when we had Gina Pierre come in, um, from Boston, she looked at our policies and saw some misalignment between discrimination and non-harassment policies, so this was, she worked with the ring to just clean up the language that there's alignment between different policies that the school committee has.
Great, thank you. Um, so additional items that I captured tonight, so, uh, one was what I sort of briefly mentioned on earlier, Fort River School Building Committee update, and sort of having that as a standing, um, agenda item if the, the committee's in agreement, um, which sounds pretty important to me. And then incorporating, uh, Wildwood and Crocker Farm next steps, um, and this is around the specialized programming idea. Uh, regionalization board update, bringing that back up, and then the retail marijuana , uh, policy. And is there anything else that I missed, Dr. Morris?
I had two, one was Special Ed Establishment Fund, um, which actually would likely be a somewhat lengthy topic, um, and reorganization of subcommittee assignments, otherwise our lists are identical.
Excellent. Great, anything else, um, that we're missing?
This is an agenda item, but just planning, um, is there anything we need to discuss or talk about prior to us sitting up at the front of Amherst Town Meeting for the school articles and?
Excellent question.
It's a question, since we have members that haven't done it before, and I'm also curious as to what we're gonna.
So there are, uh, well, Dr. Morris, why don't you go ahead, because there's, there's two, uh, updates at this point that the Amherst School Committee and the Amherst Regional School Committee have to make.
Yes, so.
Budgets, yeah.
Right, so the, we got an email from Ms. Tyman, who's the finance committee chair that, um, and I think she's on the town coordinating committee, that they're, uh, which, um, will be well appreciated by all, myself in particular perhaps, and Mr. Mangano, that, uh, they're aiming to have both the regional assessment method article, as well as the discussions of the Amherst Elementary School budget and regional budget all in the same night, uh, which would be really helpful. I didn't ask for it, but pleasant to receive that email. And so they're not quite sure when that's going to be, because I think there's some uncertainty of how the beginning of town, the timing of the first couple of articles and how that's going to go, uh, but that they would try to let us know as soon as possible. Um, I was asked, because it had to be done beforehand, who was going to introduce certain articles and who was to speak to them, so luckily I guessed right on who was going to be the, uh, Amherst Chair, which was just a guess at that point, but since Mr. Donas was the vice chair, it was, previously, it was, I needed to have a placeholder that I was going to let folks know around who was going to speak to different articles.
Well, I believe my name was submitted as vice chair, right, or acting chair, yeah.
It was, absolutely, yeah, I'm speaking just about the, the guess, right, it was just because she was the ranking member of the Amherst School Committee at the time I was asked to share that information, um, would be introducing, um, the article for the Amherst Elementary Schools, and then, uh, Mr. Nakajima for the regional schools. I'm only saying it because it's relevant, because we're all on the table and all happen the same night. Um, and that Mr. Mangano and I would, would also, Mr. Mangano would speak more specifically to the regional assessment methodology, and I would speak more to the budgets, both at Amherst and region, and I think I'll follow past practice, which is to make one statement for both budgets. Town meeting is, I think, appreciated having, while they're two different districts, they've appreciated having one common messaging from the superintendent on that, so that's the approach that we're looking at. Capital items, Mr. McPherson will be able to speak to, uh, that likely, it almost certainly won't be on the same night, because it'll be part of a capital item, it's a town-wide one, we don't have specific, school-specific articles for capital, they're integrated into the larger town capital discussion.
Yeah. Great. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Move to a chair.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, we are adjourned.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We made it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was appointed?